Julie, can you just double check that the light on the microphone is green?
It is.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Bianco. I'm the CEO at the Hampshire Regional YMCA. I have been the CEO there for almost 10 years now. So we're here today to request an amendment to the previously approved YMCA tree planting plan that was part of our outdoor project. We are looking to amend the tree planting from the nine approved trees to six in different locations. I have a copy that I'll show of the original Berkshire Design Proposal that was approved, the updated Berkshire Design Plan, photos of our existing trees. We have 53 trees currently on our small property. And originally, we were asked to plant nine new trees. Three trees were removed when the Aeronazium, which is our outdoor exercise space, was built. One was sick, two were cut down, and they were actually reused as live edges of the Aeronazium. This is the approved plan. So if you can see, there were three trees along Wood Lawn, five trees between the YMCA and the playground, and that is eight. And then this tree over here along Prospect Street was cut down before I even started, so that was added into the plan. These four trees along Massasoit have already been planted by Tree Northampton, I believe. So again, we're proposing to plant six trees in different locations than originally proposed. And we're doing that for a variety of reasons. First, safety and security. So if we plant the trees as they are originally proposed, we don't have a clear view to the playground or the playing fields or the parking lot from our cameras. We are hoping to install solar on our Aeronazium in the future, and those trees would block that solar. And the species that was put in the original plan, from what I'm told from a tree specialist, is not the right kind of tree to plant there. So we're looking for six new trees, three London Plain trees, and I'll show you this in pictures along the playground fence line, two Honey Locust streets on either side of the upper parking lot, and one Sweet Gum tree to replace the oak tree that was removed prior to 2016. And again, we got that information from somebody that works closely with Tree Northampton. Okay, so again, this is the original design. We want to remove these ones with the Xs. We want to instead put three trees here. So we're not opposed to planting more trees, even though we have 53. It's the locations that they're in that we're opposed to. We would put two trees over here by the upper playground or the upper parking lot, and we would replace that tree along Prospect Street, which is also a challenge because it's under the umbrella of other big trees. So just to give you, it was actually a beautiful day once in the spring, and I went out and took pictures. So we have seven trees along Massasoit, two mature and fat newly planted. This is just another view of the beautiful trees along Massasoit Street. Prospect Street, this is the corner facing Massasoit. There's four trees along the corner and four new trees on the tree belt already. This is another view of that coming from Massasoit towards Wood Lawn. These are the two trees behind the Y along Prospect, and you can kind of see the stump over there, and that's where we'd said we would replace a tree. And that was, again, prior to this whole outdoor project. There are three trees located behind the YMCA, kind of where you come up the stairs towards the Wood Lawn lot. There are four trees in the center of the parking lot, large trees. Next to the Y, there are four more trees along Massasoit. Wood Lawn Ave has six trees across from Child's Park, between the basketball court and the neighbors. Wood Lawn Ave between the Y and Nettleman's has six more new trees. There are three trees in front of the playground, which, again, we installed that brand-new playground in 2017 that is used by the public. There's another view of those three trees looking towards the Y and the Aeronazium. Here is another view of the two trees along Prospect with that stump that we will replace. There's nine trees at the end of the playground by the neighbors in the corner. And there's another view of those nine trees creating quite a bit of shade and privacy. Here's the view from Wood Lawn towards the playground, and that's the area that we said we would plant three trees. Here's the view from the playground towards Child's Park. And there's some of the trees that have already been planted and our new fence. This is a view from Massasoit towards the pavilion and playground. This is the pavilion. So if you're looking from the pavilion out towards the playground, that's the view that we have from the floor. This is another view of that, and you can see the pretty live-edged tree that we actually used. That was one of the trees that was previously there. This is another view of that, and you can see both of the used trees there. This is the quote that we are given from Kiter, who was our project manager and the person that did the construction, which was nine trees originally. And that's almost $10,000, almost $9,000. So again, just to review, improve safety and security, so we don't, whoops, we don't have a blocked view of the playground and field, potentially having a future solar project. The space proposed near the pavilion isn't realistic for those large trees. They're going to cause a lot of shade, and there's just not enough room for them. So and also an unsuitable tree species for the original location according to the person that we consulted with. So again, we're proposing six new trees instead of nine. This is where we would replace one, where that stump is. This is where we would put three. And then we would put one along this kind of tree belt in between the parking lot and the basketball court, and then one on the other side, because we really don't have room for them anywhere else. And that's the presentation. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I'll go back to the plan if that's helpful or anywhere anyone wants me to go.
What are you thinking about putting in? When are you thinking about putting in solar?
So we're in discussions right now with a solar company. However, we're not sure that it's going to be feasible. So I mean, we're hoping one to five years.
And if we okayed the decrease in trees, would you be okay with putting money into the tree bank?
Into the what? Into the tree bank?
Yeah.
So the original quote was $8,900. So if the other trees cost us, I don't know, less than that, I guess we could consider putting the balance in if that's a requirement.
I don't know how much does it?
Is that?
What does the tree, what does that cost? Do you have an idea?
Julie, could you just clarify that none of these trees were required as mitigation for trees that were being removed? They were all condition of the site plan?
Yeah, that's what I believe. I think the only one that was added was that one along Prospect, because that one was removed. But I'm not 100% sure about that, to be honest. Here, I'll go to that quote.
I thought when the Aeronazium was built, we had to remove some trees there.
Three trees.
Three trees. And then we calculated the diameter of those trees, and that gave us a count kind of for the amount of new trees to be planted.
Yeah, there's just not room on the.
No, no, I understand. Just trying to figure out how we got to where we were, and that's what we do with any kind of development. When trees are removed, if it's greater than such and such a circumference, then that gives us a formula that tells us how many trees should be then replanted.
And from what I understand from Berkshire Design, they were less than that diameter, but diameter.
Rich, thank you.
I'm confused. So there was some mitigation, some tree mitigation for the original project. That was all planted?
No.
No. So some of these trees are part of that original mitigation?
See, in this picture, if you see along where the edge of the Aeronazium is, there were three trees there that were dying.
Yeah.
We took those down. One was dying.
But what I'm asking, was the mitigation completed or not?
No.
No. And so, yeah, and so we are talking about mitigation then. So I just wanted to understand the authority that we have over these trees. And I didn't quite, and Ms. Bianco, I didn't quite understand why you showed us all the living trees.
Because there's not a lot of room for more living trees there.
That's the point you were trying to make.
Yeah, I mean, we have 53 trees on a few acres of land. So to put nine more is a lot of trees. And it, I mean, I'm not opposed to.
Just for clarification.
Trees that we have to take care of and.
When we approve a.
Oh, well.
When we approve a site plan as part of what we do here, it really doesn't really matter how many trees are on the site. It's how many come down. There's a very specific formula. How many come down that are above a certain size, and then there's a required amount to go back. You either have to put them back, or you have to pay into the tree fund. We give everybody that option. So without knowing, right here, sitting here, if it was three trees that needed to go back, or 12 trees that needed to go back, or nine trees that needed to go back. And so some were mitigation and some might have been cosmetic. But we're concerned with the ones that were replacing the trees that were taken down. And I think we typically care less about where you put them, but that they are just replaced because we're keeping up with the tree population in the city. And so if it's not convenient to place them somewhere, then we accept payment into a tree fund, which means we plant them somewhere else in the city. So I think what I'm just a little confused about is how many trees were required to be replaced, and were those replaced? And so are you asking us to not have to plant cosmetic trees, or are you asking us to not have to plant tree mitigation trees?
Yeah, so just to clarify for the board, these were not trees that were required to be planted under the tree significant tree ordinance. So the trees that were taken down were more than a year prior to the application, so weren't subject to the significant tree ordinance, but were included on the site plan, and the board did consider the new trees that would be planted with regard to compliance with 350116C and how the site will function harmoniously in relation to other structures and open spaces and as part of its overall approval of the project.
So Sarah, to your point, then, the fact that there was a tree plan in the original site plan, and now they're asking to change, a technical change, brings it back here. But really, all we need to be confident of is, as you say, that it continues to meet the.
Correct. So no relief under the significant tree ordinance is being requested. It's an amendment to the site plan that the planning board had.
Thank you for clarification.
And so it really has to do with, I think, part of the staff moment mentioned that the original placement of those trees helped to screen part of, forgive me, we looked at so many different pictures. I'm not going to get the location right, but screening, I think, part of some residential spaces, between residential spaces and part of the Aeronazium, is that correct? And so now with this shift in location, that screening is no longer happening.
So I would say these trees would not screen because there's already trees. So if you look at the trees down the middle with the Xs, I know it's hard to see on here. I have handouts if you want them, but those were the proposed trees. So you would have a long trunk, and it's going to take probably 30 years for them to get high enough, right? Over in this corner, there's already nine trees that are blocking along with a fence. So that wasn't the purpose of those trees. The purpose of the arborvitae's was sound mitigation. Those have been planted. And we have sound panels put in, and we have to follow the sound ordinance. Whether there's trees there or not, we're already following the sound ordinance. So I don't know which view is best, Rita. Do you want, I have this on paper if that's easy.
Could you possibly zoom in on this?
Bye.
Well, I understand the ones on the south side.
You're my Rich. Thank you.
So I understand, I'm assuming the reason the ones on the south side of the building are being removed is because those are the ones that would impinge some of the solar opportunity that you have that are a little off-screen here.
Yep.
What's the problem with the ones on the top side, the three up there? Why is that?
Six have been planted along the tree belt.
Oh, okay. So it's, okay. You'd just rather put them somewhere else?
Right. So we said we'll move them down here where there aren't any trees, and they wouldn't block solar, and they wouldn't block the view from our cameras of the field of, you know, of the court, of any of that.
Thank you.
Yep. There's the other one over there.
Other questions from the board? All right, why don't we turn things over then to the public for questions and comments? We will first take public comment here in.
Which one? Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, so we will first take public comment here in chambers and then on Zoom. Please remember to state your name and address. And remember also to address your comments to us on the board. We will typically kind of aggregate comments, sort of take them all at once, and either address them ourselves or ask questions of the applicant at the end. So is there anybody here who would like to make a public comment? Yes. So if the applicant would take a seat so we can have public there, thank you.
Hi, I'm Betsy Yant. I live at 94 Massasoit Street. And so where off, when I go on my patio at 94 Massasoit, and I look out, I am facing the Aeronazium. And in good faith, when we came a couple of years ago and were told these trees, well, it will be a beautiful structure, and sight and sound will be reasonable. And to now hear that, I think it looks very barren. I'm on my back deck. I look out and I see Aeronazium. People lifting weights, early, late. Sound has been better. And again, we were here a few years, a year ago with that concern, very real concern. And visually, I see starkness right over to that Aeronazium. And nothing I can do. I've got trees, but they're pretty bald on the bottom. And so the side of my house, yes, we have a lot of shade, especially in, once things leaf out, and when things haven't leafed out half the year, it's pretty wide open. And right now, we have the view of the big white tent, which houses a lot of activity about 10 feet from my back fence, with a lot of activity with the children's play area. Again, less noise, nice little people, but it's a lot, it's a lot of activity. But the pavilion, the Aeronazium, again, it is wide open. And in good faith, we came gathered as multiple neighbors with concerns about sight and sound. And we're told that the trees were going to be there. There was no discussion about solar being there. And now it's sort of another change, and we'll just put trees elsewhere, and we're good to go. I think the barrenness in front of the pavilion needs addressing, and I think something up to, you can look, the view was, we did not see a view of back up, and here's the pavilion from near my yard. And we did not see a view of, if you look out from the children's play area, you can now see clear across to the Nettleman's roundabout, because there is nothing. It is just stark parking lot. I'm in support of shade trees where they were supposed to, where they originally said they were going to be, and less starkness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aren't they putting two trees in that parking lot right now?
Sir, can you approach the, can you approach the microphone so people online can hear you? Thank you. And please state your name and address.
I'm Justin Nellman from Nellman's Floors. And I primarily have just two questions, one for Ms. Julie.
Sir, can you address your questions to us, please? Thank you. And we will pass them on to the applicant.
That's rude. Hold on, turn my back. But anyways.
Sir, the hearing is between us and the applicant, so we will be sure to relay your questions to the applicant. Thank you.
Ms. Julie, do I understand that there is one tree being parked, being planted by the parking lot next to the line for Nettleman's Floors? Or are there more? Oh, that's hard for me to understand.
We will ask her that question. So you would like to clarify the locations of the trees, especially relative to your property? Yes. Okay, we will ask her that question. Do you have another question?
I have a question for the board.
Great.
Is there a law as far, that goes along with planting a tree from a property line? Can you plant a tree on the property line, or do you have to be six feet in, or three feet in, or a foot in?
We will ask that question of our staff and get clarification on that as well.
Okay.
Are there other people here? Yes.
Hi, my name's Tamara Cupfer, and I live at 117 Massasoit Street. And I'm directly facing the parking lot and the Aeronazium. So I also have concerns about the removal of those three trees, where the Aeronazium is on the side of the Aeronazium facing the playground. In particular, those, to my mind, I walk by there every day, and there are very small plantings right now. I think there are azaleas that border that area. And to me, it looks like there's plenty of room for trees, and I feel like the roof, I don't know the height of the roof, but where the solar panels will go, it's quite high. And so I feel like there are a lot of smaller trees that you could plant there that would give some shade. And I just, when I look at, I realize that there are a lot of trees like bordering the property. And I think like in that count, there are, of course, like much of that count are the arborvitae, and there are trees, you know, all along the property. But on the, where the playground is and the field and the Aeronazium, that's quite bare. And really, like, we could benefit from, the whole neighborhood could benefit from shade trees there. I think like in this time of, you know, climate change and, you know, higher temperatures, we just need more shade. So I'd like to see, you know, nine trees, which was what, you know, was in the original plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other folks here in chambers who would like to give comment? Okay, we will invite people on Zoom to give comment. If you're on Zoom and would like to give comment on the YMCA proposed site amendment, please use the raise hand feature, and we will call on you.
No, not seeing any hands on Zoom.
Okay. All right.
Now there's one. Jacqueline?
Okay, Jacqueline. You may need to allow her to unmute. I'm not sure.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Jacqueline McCrainer, Northampton, Massachusetts. I was curious about the, I guess, statue, maybe that Ms. LaValle referenced. So what does that have to do with the plan under discussion?
Are you asking about the tree replacement statue?
Well, I don't know. Ms. LaValle referenced some statute, so it sounded like it was like 11.6. Was that, I just, I'm trying to remember what she said and how that bears on this project.
I can clarify that for you. 11.6 is a part of the zoning that states, it's a part of site plan review, that site will function harmoniously in relation to other structures and open spaces to the natural landscape, existing buildings, and other community assets in the area.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. I'm still kind of digesting all of that, but thank you for that. And I guess I would just say that I support the residents who are advocating for, you know, tree canopy in the area for all purposes, whether it's aesthetics or noise, but also for climate change, because that is definitely a consideration in this day and age. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think I want to first turn it back to the applicant, because we had one question from the public and another question, I think, from the board, just wanting to, again, kind of clarify the proposed, where you're proposing to add the trees.
Sure.
And it might be helpful if, as we're looking at the site plan, if you can show, directly point out Nettleman's, the nearby streets, et cetera, so we can get oriented.
Okay.
Thank you.
The plan first. Okay, before I get there, I just want to, I want to respond. This is from Massasoit Street, looking towards the Aeronazium. This is also that view. Nettleman's is over here. You can see their bunker and the store there. So this is the, these are the trees that are already there. Let me go back to the plan. So Nettleman's is here. What else did you want to know?
And so can you point out again for everybody where you're proposing to plant the trees?
Suggestion from the tree person was to put one here, and I'll show you in the actual picture, but it's like right next to the parking lot. It's not really near the property line, and one here.
On either side of that.
And either side of that parking lot, correct. It's like a berm, like a tree. I can show you the picture. It's like a, it's like a berm, like a tree. I'll, I can show you the picture. We're just trying to honestly find locations that we thought the trees would actually grow and not, not block anything else. As far as I think Tamara commented on these trees not growing too big, the proposed, um, original plan from Berkshire Design was London plane trees, which are the trees that are along the back on Prospect Street, which actually do grow extremely large. So, um, that's also something we're open to is putting a smaller type tree if we had to, but this is a London plane tree. And those are really big. Um, let me show you that just the other pictures to answer Mr. Nudelman's question. And this is from the Yonts who also spoke. So this is, this is, um, the, these two views are in their corner. And then so this is where one of the trees was proposed along this tree, uh, this grassy area here. And then the other one would be kind of near where that white truck is on our property. We're open to other suggestions for the six trees. We just really don't want to plant five trees along the playground. So certainly open to suggestions from the board. Is there anything else I can go to for you?
There may be. Questions, additional questions or comments from the board?
Oh, sorry. You put the other views.
Sam, can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
So you put the other trees, uh, I mean, if we go back to that last picture.
Yep.
So this is the playground. Uh, so you put them right there.
Yeah.
And there'd be three of them right there?
That's what we're proposing.
Okay.
So three by the playground, two at the upper parking lot, one on either side of the parking lot, and then one out on Prospect once that stump is taken out.
Correct. And, and also the 53 trees I, that we already have do not include arborvidae. Those are actual trees.
You understand.
And the arborvidae have been planted alongside the arnasium.
They're in the, here, not in this picture, but there, this is a picture from last.
Okay.
Here, they're there. Yep.
Have you considered the possibility of, um, a species that would be, uh, wouldn't grow as tall and therefore would still enable solar access while also providing some screening there?
We have not, but we would be open to that.
Okay. I mean, I certainly remember when this project came forward, that this was one of the things that we thought carefully about, um, was the way that, um, the noise, which is not on the docket tonight, but also the sightlines and so forth, could be, um, addressed and mitigated as part of this project. So I'm interested to find a way to maintain some of that screening, with some other adjustments that would also enable the solar access, which is obviously, you know, something to be supported.
May I actually suggest a sort of a compromise would be that we'd make it seven trees. Uh, but that you would plant one sort of at the beginning of the, um, uh, of this arnasium with close to the, close to the parking lot. So that there would be a, I mean, a visual visually from Massasoit, they would see, you know, the trees, there'd be one tree there.
This is the view now from Massasoit. So where are you? And we're certainly open to suggestions. Where are you thinking? There's, there's a lot of trees there.
Would you mind going back one slide to the, uh, arborvida? There was there somewhere. Yep, right there. So.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. That's by the bike stand. Um, and those are, have just been planted. They're going to grow another four, five, six, eight feet tall. Arborvida can get pretty big.
Yeah. And they're also in this corner here.
In that corner there.
I guess that's where I was thinking.
Yeah.
A tree. No, but you are right. You have the arborvida there. So, yep.
Rich, did you have a question or a comment?
Well, as long as we're discussed in discussion, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the folks on Massasoit that they want to maximize their screening. And although I wasn't on the board at that time, I understand that this was an issue that was discussed. It seems to me your suggestion that we find, that they find some, there are definitely species that are not going to grow tall enough to impede the, the solar gain on the rooftop there. And, and, but that will, uh, provide screening to the neighbors across the street. And it just seems like that's the obvious, what we're hearing about. That's, that's the concern and, uh, that we shouldn't lose sight on that.
George?
I, I must admit, Rich, that I, I kind of see it a different way looking at the total landscape now. I know during the winter and when the trees aren't leafed out, there isn't as much of a, a visual kind of softening of the arnasium. But I think for the, the purpose of the why, um, that interior kind of playground, they're going to have also sale awnings in there that we kind of approved. I, I, I think adding more trees in there can really, um, impact visual lines for the Y staff. And, you know, just, just add more obstacles to, to the internal flow there of that playground area and the arnasium and the walkway there. I, I don't, I appreciate that at one point in time Berkshire Design wanted to put four or five trees there. Um, but I'm, I'm willing to, you know, rethink this and go with just the six trees.
I'm not talking about.
Rich, your mic. Thank you.
To be clear, I'm not talking about the, the five trees. I have no problem with not including those trees that are, that, that impeded the sightline there. What I'm hearing, what I'm not understanding is why the four trees along Massasoit, on the very south end of the project of the property, couldn't, if something else couldn't be there that would, the only reason they're not, we're hearing from neighbors across the street who are concerned about the loss of, of screening south.
No, I'm confused now. Four trees along Massasoit, new trees to be planted along Massasoit?
Yeah. Well, that's was in the original plan. These four trees on the south side here that have X's in them were going to be planted.
Here, I'm sorry, because they've already been planted.
Plan, please.
Sure.
Okay, those, those four X's on the south there.
Those were already, I'm sorry, that, I don't mean to interrupt you, but those were already planted by tree Northampton. Oh, we already have trees there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was confused by the X's.
That's, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
And I'll show you the picture. So that's all. If you look down Massasoit.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry for the confusion.
So, uh, a couple of different ideas floating around here. It sounds like some folks might be okay with the proposed changes. Um, others might be interested in maintaining some screening for the neighbors. Um, Melissa, Stacy?
Um, I just want to confirm that, so the reasons for not putting them sort of adjacent to the arnasium for potential solar and then the, were there sightline issues from, what are the sightline issues? So the cameras?
Yeah. So if you look at this picture here, well, that's from, it's hard. So right now, like if you were standing in the arnasium or cameras, which are above the arnasium and on the wall, which we actually helped Mr. Nudelman, I hope, find the person that stole their money by using our cameras. Um, it, it blocks the sightline. So we often help the police try to.
And those are just security cameras.
People going through our property all the time, which you've heard, like we walk through the property and it's, it's private property.
Yeah, there's just security cameras.
There's security cameras. Correct.
And they're like located on the top of the arnasium.
All over the building, but on top of there as well. So it would definitely block the view of the playground in the field.
Do you know the approximate height of them? I'm just trying to get a sense of.
I don't, but I can get that to you.
Just ballpark it, eight feet, 10 feet.
So they're like, if you look, let me see if I can get a better picture of the building. They're.
16.
I'm, I'm asking because I'm just trying to get a sense of, again, is there a way that we, some screening in there that would be lower and not introduce that issue? Cause it's real.
They go down. They don't go, they can't go up and no.
Sure.
They shoot straight out. So they're on the corners of these. Some of them are on the corners of this top, the building. So kind of above the arnasium roof. Some are on the front. They're all over the Y. Yeah.
Okay.
So I feel like if we were looking at something shorter, like less than the height of the lowest roof edge of the arnasium, it's not really going to be blocking cameras as much since they're mounted up pretty high as opposed to trees like we see in there would. I'm kind of middle on the, of the road on this one. Uh, I do remember we've, we've had, we've met on this site plan a couple of times now, three or four, maybe. And there was a lot of community engagement the first time around. And there was a lot of concern about noise and light and screening. And I feel like we should bear that in mind here. So I'm, I'm more in favor of, uh, going with something shorter that can allow some screening.
So what if they continue the arborvida heads around there? That then could be topped off and still live at some point.
Yeah. I mean, it was noise and light. There was the concerns and so that helps.
I mean, those are honestly, I feel like they tell more of noise than a tree would just be a trunk.
Right. Yeah.
And light.
So then would we then reduce or would that take up? So they, they're suggesting that they plant six new trees as opposed to the nine that was originally indicated. So would the arborvida take the place of those other three trees? Or could we reduce the six down to four? And then ask them for the arborvida across the front of the arnasium there or the side? I don't know how they equate price wise or, um, planting wise, you know? And these are stacked so that they're pretty much impenetrable at that corner when they grow up. Um, so that it would be a number of arborvida to cover the front of that, that whole expanse there. And, you know, I, I do appreciate there are a lot of other mature trees on the campus. Um, so it's not like we're devoid of, uh, carbon sink here.
In some ways, I'm less concerned with the number of trees than with the placement of trees. And I think it sort of depends what the trees are, how many would be needed to, uh, create the desired effect.
I'm not sure what the, I, I really don't understand what the desired effect is. I mean, if they're in a row, if you have to have one, there's only one that's visual. Like if I, I plant, if I put boards down a line, you only see the first one.
From the other side.
From here.
Like. From the wide side.
Yeah.
So the.
Then it's not blocking, but then it's not acting as any cover.
No, if you had one, no, but if you had a wall of them, then it's, it's creating visual and audio screening.
The tree is a visual.
Well, if, if there's lights on in there, there's, it's, as there is at, at times, I mean, it's creating some visual screening.
And just to be clear, we're typically not operating after hours. So lights, I mean, a day like this, maybe lights are on during the day. Other than that, we're not out there at night.
You know, I think that the planet of our videos makes all the sense in the world and they understand why they need to put, put this money towards towards these three extra trees.
I, can I just ask a question? Is it about the money or is it about the trees? Because for us, it's about making sure we have trees that make sense that are doing what they're, what you wanted them to do in the first place. And it's not necessarily about saving money, although we would love to do that. So saying like, if we make a donation, that's okay. That doesn't feel like that is the tree answer. Unless it's to put a tree somewhere else, because it is about the carbon footprint. But, um, still a little confused about the original plan was to have those trees there. And if we're talking about screening and that kind of thing, I don't know how that equates to money.
I think, I think there was some confusion at the beginning of the hearing about whether this, if these trees were proposed because of tree mitigation, then paying into the city tree fund is an option. Since this is not their purpose, I do not think that paying into the tree fund is the right solution. So we're with you that our goal is to identify what's the best way to, and location to plant trees on this particular site to meet the goals of the project as originally approved.
Thanks. That makes sense.
Um, it looks like we have some additional public comments. So, um, I, and from folks we've heard from before, which is great. I would just ask you to, um, you know, bring forward new, new comments. Um, so you're welcome to approach the mic. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. One is the, I think that's the southern side of the basketball court that has no trees. So in the current, um, revised proposal, it sounds like the Y is proposing three trees against the playground fence. And then, but directly across from that, like there's the hill and that one side, the fence facing the playground fence. So that edge of the basketball court also has no trees. And again, I just want to, you know, what we're not seeing in the pictures is that that whole section, like that whole, both the side field, which I know they use as a playing field and can't have trees right there, but the, but the other sec field. So to the left of their nasium, in between the playground and the basketball court, there are no trees. So to me, you know, there's space. And so I was wondering, you know, why in the original plan there, there aren't trees on that part of that edge of the basketball court. Um, I'm in support of trees going on the edge of the playground, like to add shade to that area. In terms of the arnasium, that area that, that we were, you were just discussing. Um, I think arborvida is one solution, but I also again, want to just reiterate, like, I think there's a need for shade in that area and that does not provide shade. So.
Thank you.
So I'm facing the kids' playground. And again, so that's the side I'm, I'm thinking about. And I would support more of a somewhat lower, not humongous shade tree, not arborvida, just from an aesthetic standpoint. And I, I just think it would be a better proposal in that area. But I do appreciate the idea of keeping the shade tree there. So I think we were talking about two different. Tamara's house faces Massasoit Street, um, facing the, the kids' playground and along, alongside of, um, the pavilion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not an arborist, but I don't know if there's a sage tree that we're going to be able to plant there that's going to stay under 10 or 12 feet.
Yeah.
Life of its, um, so e- either you have a, a tall shrub or you have some kind of pygmy pear tree. But nothing that's going to provide a lot of shade. And, and I think, I, I think the shade is really kind of up to the Y and how they see that area functioning for their activities. You know, uh, I, I appreciate that the Butters things have changed since they moved in here, but they did move into a very active um, campus. And certainly the arnasium is new since they moved in, but uh, you know, activities change in the playground, there's the summer camps, the basketball that happens. I don't know if we can tweak this um, plan to, to meet all of the needs of the Butters. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just uh, caught up in the, the, the issue between. I don't, I'm not looking for shade. Maybe they are, they would like, the, the Y would like to have more shade, but, but I think that the site plan that was approved wasn't preoccupied with shade. It was preoccupied with giving the neighbors more screening. And I think there are quite a few planting options that would not grow tall, would grow wide. Some are evergreen, some are deciduous. But I would look for asking them to go back and to their arborist and, and find some of those species and improve the, the impact on, you know, 94 and 117 are, are two houses on Massasoia that we've heard from. I think it can be done. And if that was the original intent of the, of the planting, let, we shouldn't, we should now change to thinking about shade. We should be thinking about screening and screening can be accomplished with, with, certainly with a variety of species.
If we're looking at screening, what if we put a big, huge fence around the Y?
So none of us is our landscape architect sitting here, correct? I feel like I'm out of my element here. Usually there's a plan presented to us and we vote on whether we're accepting the plan as an amendment. So the other option is to look at the plan that's been presented to us and yea or nay it.
That's exactly right.
Right. I, I don't think it's our purview to redesign this site.
Or if there, there's additional information that the, the board might want to consider, you could request that and continue the hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I see my comments more as saying to the Y, you might consider doing this. Not, we're not going to, you know, I'm personally, I'm okay with approving, but they, what they're coming forward with, but, but I think they need to rethink it about how they're benefiting their neighbors.
Right. I mean, I think my tendency might be to continue to give the applicant time to talk to Berkshire Design or whoever else they might want to talk to about seeing if there's a different way to configure this, different species, different layout that would more closely meet the intentions of the original design in terms of screening while also addressing these other very legitimate concerns of solar access and safety and security. So is there, can we? Yes, it is not our job to redesign the plan. But it is our job to, you know, evaluate the harmoniousness of this plan as it relates to the neighborhood. And I, I think there's room for improvement here.
Is that something that could be done in consultation with staff, Berkshire Design and staff that we said? Or do we want to actually see the, a planting plan come back again? So I, I think what we're doing is suggesting that we continue the hearing to some date in the future and have them come back with another set of plans. To delineate three or four trees in there and staying within the capacity of nine new trees. Correct?
Right. I mean, I don't know, Sarah, you can weigh in, but I don't know how else we would do it to say, oh, we approve the reduction in the number of trees, but not at these locations. I guess maybe you could do staff review. I'm just, I'm not sure how else.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would probably be too much to, to do.
Yeah.
The board's input.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a little confused. It just seems like we're having a meeting for a meeting for a meeting. They've asked for, uh, they've given us a, a plan. We just need to say yes or no. Then we don't need to send them back to talk to someone who costs money. Like, for God's sakes, meetings for meetings for meetings. Can we all stop this nonsense and just vote? I mean, either we're going to reject it and they're going to have to do it. Or we're going to, or we're going to say it and they're going to be okay with it. Why do we need to have meetings for meetings? Just work.
Well, also continue it and.
Also, the, the tree planting season is kind of now, so it would be great to get a decision or else it'll be fall. I, from what I'm being told. I feel like as soon as we plant the trees, the rain will stop, but if you want the rain to stop.
I hear what you're saying, Sam, but I also think personally, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm not comfortable approving the plans as they are today. And so I'd rather give the applicant a chance to revisit and come back with something that's uh, a compromise, rather than just saying no outright and then forcing them to, you know, proceed with plans that they see as unviable and expensive, or then having to restart the process all over again, whatever that might look like. This feels to be like the kind of pathway forward that will, has the most likelihood of success.
If we choose to do that, will we make a motion to continue or will we close? We wouldn't close the public hearing if we're going to, if we're considering a motion to continue, correct?
Yeah, we would move to continue.
We actually just take a quick thing because you're right. Like, I mean, I personally would accept their plan. I mean, if we just, a show of hands of that, and then if that's, if that doesn't pass, then if that's, if we don't have enough votes, then we could keep it open. But I guess it's just.
So.
A straw poll of sorts?
It's a straw poll.
Knowing that, Sam, their plans imply no planting in front of the arnasium so that the Butters have to deal with what they're dealing with today.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Take a vote on who would be in favor and continuing or?
Uh, we, yeah, which we should.
We're not voting on anything.
Yeah, we're not. Straw poll. If we were to vote on uh, continuing the hearing, who would vote yes in favor of continuing?
Can I, is it?
Yes.
Here.
Got it. Thank you, Chris. This feels like it's getting a little ridiculous, but.
Is it possible to put a condition that there's some sort of screening in front of the arnasium? Sarah?
Or to approve?
Yeah, I'm the, the board could determine a, a set number of trees to be planted in locations and potentially leave the species up to the applicant.
Is there a fee every time we return?
Uh, not, not if the hearing is continued. If, if it's a new application, there would be.
Just your time. Do you charge the Y overtime?
Can. Unfortunately, no.
So there's a possibility to vote with a condition.
That there's. For example, three trees are planted in front of the arnasium, a species to be turned, determined with staff and the applicant.
But it would have to specify a number of trees.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, we need to close uh, public comment. Yeah.
Which, so we kind of need to decide if we're going to continue first. I mean, if somebody has a motion in mind that uh, you think would give the applicant enough to work with and meet our goals, that would be great. I, but you know, to Melissa's point, we are not landscape designers, so I, I can't make motions anyway, but I wouldn't know what exactly to tell them how to formulate it that would I would be confident would work.
There are no conditions implied in a most, in this motion, I don't think, other than maybe the condition would be that so many trees would be planted in front of the arnasium. The species to be determined between staff and the applicant and the applicant's arborist. So then I, I wouldn't need any more information. So I would be, I, I would be, feel okay in, in making a motion to close the public hearing. Unless other people needed more information from the applicant or from staff.
Was that, was that a motion?
No, that was a question. But now hearing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay.
Abstain.
Chris abstains. So George, do you have an actual motion for us? Okay.
Where was that agenda? I have a motion to make to. So the, so, so this is a little difficult because the applicant, the amendment is to have six trees planted, not nine. So we, our motion would be different than what the applicant, what it's, what's the applicant's proposed amendment is. Correct? Our proposed uh, motion is to have the applicant plant nine trees, three of which would be in front of the arnasium. And that, the species to be determined between staff and the applicant. So to continue to stay with the nine trees, not allow the applicant to reduce it to six. Except where they are with their new planting uh, site situated um, by the parking lot and by the playground. And then three in front of the arnasium. So that's a convoluted motion for sure, but it's not accepting or denying what the applicant has proposed to.
I'm wondering, I'm sorry to make this so complicated, but I'm wondering if we could say at least three, so nine trees total and at least three by the arnasium. So if, for example, they decided to continue the Arbividae wall there, they might want to put more. And I would be okay with seeing some moving from other places to add some additional screening there, but I don't know how others feel about that.
I think at least is a good improvement. Yeah.
Okay. Got that? George doesn't.
Yeah, well, not, not when you, oh boy, not when you throw the Arbividae into that formula, because that's a very different kind of planter than you would want to have an Arbividae head as opposed to three spaced trees, you know? So that creates a little bit of a uh, dilemma in terms of a number. So, okay, they go and plant six Arbividae or nine Arbividae, then they don't have to plant any other trees on the campus. You know what I mean? So.
But, but Jana, weren't you saying that we're basically, it's, it's the motion that George made, but instead of just saying three trees in front of the Arbiv, uh, in front of the arnasium, at least three trees in front of the arnasium.
Yes.
Let's not discuss Arbividae.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yep. So let me restate the motion. Um, I moved to approve the application by the YMCA to um, note. See, we're actually denying the application of the YMCA and providing them an alternative, which I moved to approve the application of the YMCA. For nine, no, it doesn't make sense.
Sarah, can you give us some guidance on how to formulate a motion here?
So you would not be approving the amendment, the amendment that was presented to you.
Right.
So it would be uh, denying what was presented. But adding a condition that the, um, as an alternative, the applicant could.
Oh, the condition is.
Yeah.
And so does that mean they could come back just for staff review if they do that, would that follow the terms of the condition?
For, for staff review for, for, to the species?
They wouldn't have to come back if.
Correct, okay.
So I will withdraw my original motion. I moved to deny the application by the YMCA um, for an amendment to their site plan. For the reasons discussed here and, and suggested them that they um, continue with the planning of nine trees. At least three to be um, at uh, in front of the arnasium and those species to be confirmed uh, with discussions with the planning office staff.
Great job, George.
Let me be sure you don't.
All right. All those in favor? Okay.
Abstain.
Thank you. Okay, it is eight twenty-three. I'm going to propose that we take a five minute break. Um, and then we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which relates to uh, Phillips Place and Holly Street.
Listen, that, we don't need to be owners. We don't naturally become the consensus.
Where's everybody going? Bunch of weeds. Get back here. Near that shed, the gray shed.
Thank you. Yes.
I don't want to clean the room. Don't want.
Can you all range or tell me how to arrange?
Yes. Let me know.
Yeah, I know this. I'm going to have. But they know that they can't see. So they know that their lights went off.
I'm supposed to join the audience. I'm just, I don't think I'm supposed to join the audience through my computer.
I think that.
I think that causes the.
Okay. We're back. Our next hearing is a continuation from April 24th for a site plan and special permit by Sarah Stein O'Connell Holly LLC for a new multi-story residential building and site development at Phillips Place and Holly Street, map ID thirty-two A dash one seventy and one ninety-seven. I would like to make a few comments before we get started here. Firstly, Sam Taylor was not here at the first hearing and was not able to review the record, so he has left and will not be a part of the deliberations, but everybody else here was a part of the initial hearing. As noted, this is a continuation of the hearing that was opened on April 24th. We continued to give the applicant time to address questions and also give the board time to deliberate. So this, tonight's hearing is as though that hearing continued with a 10-minute break in between. Tonight, we're going to be focused on new information, including responses to questions from the board that arose last time, including questions around seating along the sidewalk, bike storage details, the facade along Phillips. And we also heard comments from the public about a variety of topics, parking, massing, light, how the footprint met the special permit criteria, traffic on the street, tree removal, stormwater, the building's consistency with the neighborhood, need for housing in North Hampton. So everything that came out in the first hearing from the applicant, from the board and from the public is still part of this hearing that we've continued, so we do not need to raise the same issues and questions that were raised last time. That is all still part of the hearing and all still part of our conversation and deliberations here tonight. I also want to acknowledge that there has been a petition submitted to city council, I believe it was on the agenda for last night, regarding a citizen proposed zoning change to these two parcels. That process is continuing in parallel, but the zoning change is not on the agenda tonight. And we cannot hear or respond to comments about it since it is not on our agenda. We are here to continue due process on this permit, which was begun on the 24th. Carolyn, is there anything else you want to say about that by way of introduction?
No, I mean, I think that that covers it. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Lastly, I would like to invite George to give some comment about some contact he had related to this hearing.
Board members, in an effort to be transparent, I attended a meeting of the local chapter of Strong Towns, which I do on a regular basis. They meet monthly, usually at the North Hampton Police Department conference room. Strong Towns is a group that discusses housing, safe streets, livable cities, things of that nature. This was on the meeting of May 5th. One of the agenda items was to discuss the large apartment complexes that we've been dealing with, the one on Elm Street and State Street, and also the one on Holly and Phillips. Carolyn, this was also there. She gave a nice hour-long presentation to the Strong Towns group. She left the building. I stayed. There was, part of the agenda was dealing with other things, and then there was a discussion about the conclusion of the Elm Street, State Street apartment complex by Sunwood. And after that concluded, they began the kind of a summary of the Holly Street Phillips Place that is still under discussion. I left the room at that point. I excused myself. I waited outside the conference room. When that item concluded, they came and got me, called me back into the room, and I participated in the following discussions that had to do with the high school traffic design, Bike Week, Bike Breakfast, things of that nature. So I don't feel that I in any way came across any open meeting laws or ex parte kind of procedures, and I feel like I can still discuss this, this application in an objective way. So, any questions? Thanks. Did you get my good side?
Thank you, George. All right. With that, does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Sarah Stein, O'Connell Development Group, and I will, as mentioned, try and stick just to the items we changed. So I'm starting with the site plan here. I know, I can't move that on the top. I don't know how that's showing for everyone. It doesn't, it's not a big deal. I just not sure. So here on the site plan, starting with the Phillips Place streetscape, what we did is we pulled the sidewalk closer to the building and we added a tree belt. And as you'll see on the landscaping plan in a moment, we went from four trees to five trees. And just to soften that up, there's also some material changes, which I'll speak to. But with regards to the site plan at Phillips Place there, we added a tree belt. We're also proposing two 15-minute parking spaces. Not sure if you can zoom this in. Which are in the location where our current curb cut is for the existing parking lot. So street parking, as it's currently allowed, would stay in the exact same location. That sign would change to no parking from the corner a little further down. And the additional two spaces that would be created are, would be 15-minute parking. This is something we'll have to bring to the Transportation and Parking Commission if we, you know, get this site plan approval as well. We clarified some of the sidewalk details, both in front of the garage doors, as well as widening the crosswalk from an eight-foot crosswalk to a 10-foot crosswalk at the corner of Phillips Place. We've added a couple notes to make sure we clarify that this is connected to some of the sidewalk work that was previously approved surrounding 20 Holly, the former church. You can show there, this is just clarifying, there's some existing bituminous sidewalk that will be replaced with concrete sidewalk as part of this project surrounding 20 Holly. As I said, that was previously approved with the 10 Holly site plan approval. But I just wanted to clarify that it will be completed concurrent with this and formally tie that together. We added at the front entryway terrace, a seating and planter, an eight-foot round concrete planter with seating around the exterior. There'll be some images of that in the updated renderings later on. We've also added some details to the bike room. So this is the previous site plan. And this is the new, the building footprint itself has not changed. It's mostly the changes along Phillips Place for the tree belt and then the seating at the entranceway terrace. And the bike storage for visitors at the lobby will remain. This, as I mentioned, is just to tie in the completion of the sidewalk as you come down Holly and go up Phillips on both sides. This is the landscaping plan. It shows a little more. If needed after, I can get out of presentation mode and zoom in on these as well. But this shows that we went from the four trees to the five trees along Phillips and then just adding that grass out there. And so the way it's set up is where the two 15-minute parking spaces are. It's concrete right up to the curb, so if someone was unloading, delivering, unpacking, you know, they're likely leaving that 15-minute parking space and coming right to the sidewalk. Whereas if you go a little further up Phillips, it's more just the traditional parking as it is now for street parking, and that softens that facade a bit. Per the tree warden's direction, we will have structural soils. We've had a couple back and forth with the tree warden just to make sure that we'll, and we'll follow all those details as requested. So one of the big comments last time was the massing. So to take a look at how we could impact the, or change the massing in particular, as it faces further up Phillips on the northeast side of the building, what we've done is stepped back the fourth floor and then stepped back the fifth floor again. This has added balconies at the fourth and fifth floors. The fourth floor steps back 13 feet and then the fifth floor, another 10 for 23 feet total at the roof line. You can see the building count, unit counts here have gone from 54 to 51. We lost, we removed two two-bedrooms and three one-bedrooms and increased the number of studios. We increased the number of parking spaces from 25 to 27. We showed some additional detail here of the bike room. There's room for 18 bikes within that bike storage room. And as you can see, the building face along Holly Street has changed minimally. You can see here that seating planter that is low enough that it doesn't impact sightlines for vehicles. We also changed the garage door to a see-through garage door. It's these slats that are transparent. This is the other face of the building, the northeast face. This was the biggest change with regard to the massing. On the top, you can see the previous design from this angle, and on the bottom, you can see the update that shows the balconies on the fourth and fifth floors. There, those will have a parapet, as you can see, so they won't have additional guardrails or any sort of barrier above what you can see now. So this is the current rendering from looking from Phillips down towards Holly. This was what it had previously looked like. And this is what it looks like now. This is from the other neighbor, 36 Holly, if you were standing in their backyard, just to give another view of those balconies. This is a closer view of the the streetscape at the front entrance and what that, with the two bike racks and then the planter. They're next to those two trees on the far left side. So those two trees are before the tree belt starts. They'll be in flexi pave per the city's detail. This is the other end of the building. This is where that tree belt is that has the three trees. We have changed the louvers to have a wood grain rather than just the metal louver that was originally proposed. This is the material board, so you can see some of the materials here, the the window slats for the garage doors, the full garage door would be full, you know, have slats, the entire entire garage door, whereas the trash would have a smaller slot across a smaller portion of it, just to break it up, but it wouldn't be fully transparent because it's where the trash compactor will be and such. You can see the wood grain metal louvers. This was the previous material board. And this is the new. So this shows the, the change of that northeast face of the building as well. Yep. So this was the previous. And this is the new. And then this is just the view from, you know, all the different, the different sides of full elevations. And I think that covers all the changes. Is there anything you'd like me to zoom in on or clarify?
Could you zoom in on the planting plan and also walk us through the sidewalk, the tree belt, the sort of layout of the sidewalk as it wraps around the building, both on Phillips and Holly?
So this is the landscaping plan here. The change that was made along Phillips was to have the trees that are further northeast on Phillips in a grass tree belt to, as it transitions into the residential neighborhood, that would contain that grass there. And then these two 15-minute parking spaces are shown here on the landscaping plan by the two trees furthest to the left. You can see those two spaces outlined. So there, that would be concrete. I'll go back to this one just for the rest of the sidewalk. So you can see, you can see that here as well. It's a six-foot wide sidewalk. And then there's the two tree wells that are the flexi pave here. The sidewalk continues along in front of the two garage door openings. There's pavement hatching. This is a concrete rumble strip to separate the main garage door entrance from the trash pickup area. You then continue around and in the front entryway, there is more concrete here on the corner of Holly and Phillips. There is one gravel area with stone, which is where the existing fire hydrant is located. There's the two bike racks here. There is the seating planter located right here. And then as you come around onto Holly Street, the sidewalk is wider. And then there are two tree wells here that will be the flexi pave. So the sidewalk is five feet at these, but because they're the flexi pave, which you can walk on, you have the six-foot width. And then that comes around a little closer, you know, towards our neighbor at 36 Holly, or residents could walk up here and access the bike room or the garage. Or further up to the staircase.
And the note says that it meets the city's requirements for structural soil. So is that a volumetric area that you're providing for the tree roots to grow in?
Yes, and it's the detail of how the concrete comes down and just provides a structural foundation for everything that's around it as well to complement that and the trees.
I appreciate the two new 15-minute parking spaces, but currently there's no parking on that side of Phillips Place, correct?
There is parking currently. The sign for parking starts here. You can see in gray where our current curb cut is. So our current curb cut for the parking lot is right there. So folks start parking right now. There's actually a post. It doesn't have a sign on it. I think the intention there was no, or at one point was no parking here at a corner. But folks do start parking there at the northeast part of our curb cut. So the intention is that would remain the same, the same amount of street parking that exists now. And then these two new spaces that would be added where is currently a curb cut would be 15-minute spaces.
And there's parking on the other side of Phillips alongside the church.
There is, yes.
Yes.
I can show.
But there's still enough clearance for two-way traffic there with those additional 15-minute spaces. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, as folks have mentioned, Phillips is narrow, but yeah, right now there is parking on both sides of the street through there, so it would just continue the existing condition through there. This kind of shows how, this is a photo. Of course, there's the rendering of the building. Of course, there's the rendering of the building, but these were cars that were there.
One other question. So along the first floor, the elevations, because it's a parking lot, have just slats there in many areas. There's no glass at all along the front or the side of the building on Phillips or on Holly, correct?
So there is glass. This garage door has been changed to a, a glass of sorts. It's a, you know, poly shadow resistant slats because it'll roll up. In terms of along Holly, that is, is storefront. Those are, those are glass windows there.
Those are glass windows there?
Yeah. So Phillips has these, uh, these wood slat louvers and then the, the garage door and then these two glass windows here.
Other questions from the board?
Just real quickly, could you tell us again about the and the screening or the treatment between the, I think it's the, the south side of the building and the next, as you go along Holly Street, the next residential building? Three pedestrian access doors are right. What's the screening there?
There's a, a six foot fence. We're looking at a gray vinyl solid fence. And then there's shrubbery. As you start coming up here, the sidewalk starts around seven feet wide. And then as the building steps back slightly and the sidewalk decreases in width, we have trees as you come further up here. So there's a, there's shrubbery at the beginning along the fence and then trees as you come further along when there's a little more room.
And we have three pedestrian access doors along that back wall. But on the front, we actually along Phillips, we don't have any pedestrian access. It's just the car access, right? And then the main entrance.
Correct. And, and the reason for that is because the entrance at the front corner here is at grade level. And the street of Phillips Place actually slopes up about seven feet from one end of the building to the other. So this garage door, when you come in here, it does slope down. You know, your vehicle drives down. I think it's 18 inches over that ramp. So that's the reason that it's a challenge to add doors further along is because of the grade.
Not seeing any other questions or comments from the board at the moment. So I would like to open things up for public comment, just in case new people may have joined us since the beginning of the evening. I just want to give a few reminders. Firstly, we're going to take comment first here in chambers and then on Zoom. When you approach, please state your name and your address. Remember that you're addressing your questions to us on the board, not the applicant. And we'll sort of take all your comments together and then look for themes, commonalities and discuss them among the board or potentially ask for a potential additional clarification from the applicant or from staff. We have read all of the comments that were submitted ahead of time in writing. So those are in the record and you do not need to read them aloud. And as I mentioned at the beginning, all of your comments from the first hearing are still live and in action and under consideration. So we ask that you not repeat them here tonight. And I imagine there are a lot of people who want to speak, so I also ask that folks, folks kindly not repeat what other people have said, but bring new information forth. And I'm also going to ask that people keep their comments to two minutes, please. So with that, sir.
Good evening. My name is Francisco Palomo. I reside at 42 Phillips Place, North Hampton. Basically, the new information that I would provide to you is this. Quite frankly, this building is just too large for the facility. If this special permit is approved, there will be an appeal. We're ready to retain counsel and we will prepare to file an appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Belanger. I'm a resident of 25 Wilson Ave. Just wanted to express my support for the project. I think it's a great location to add a significant quantity of new housing in, in downtown, near downtown. And I think it's a great location with bus and, and train access and near the bike path. So with that in mind, I'm excited to see housing that has less than one parking space per apartment. I think the step backs that have been adjusted are appropriate and, and go a long way towards mitigating the bulk that would be seen from the street and from neighbors without compromising too much on the overall quantity of housing that would be built. I do think there's a couple of areas for improvement, that these would be pretty minor things that could be adjusted. For the bike parking, I think the total number of spaces is probably not sufficient for a building of this size. And I think we should keep in mind that with a stacked bike rack, the spaces that are above are really not of equal usefulness to racks that are low and really limit who they, who can use them or require a bike that's a much lighter, nicer bike than a lot of folks have. On the facade, I really appreciate the mix of materials. And my request of the applicant would be just to avoid matching the colors too closely to the condos that are nearby. I like those colors, but in the renderings, it looks like it could end up being perceived as kind of one larger development than it actually is, understanding it's the same team. But just, I think it would be easy to use different colors and make it feel more variable. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Harold Wolf. I live at 28 Phillips Place. I have some visual aids. I hope I made enough copies for everyone. Some of them can share perhaps, but if you wouldn't mind passing those around.
Would you pass sort of, right?
Yes. What is new tonight? We have talked about stormwater. What is new is that a permit has been given this project for stormwater management. And I want to address that because what, it, it raises a couple of questions. Number one, why wasn't the code enforced? We'll delve into that and I'm sure we'll have a lot of fun getting answers to that question. And the second is, why would you permit this when you have clear evidence before your eyes that the stormwater system is already inadequate? And that the project will overwhelm the system? Now, what you have in front of you is a picture taken today. It could have been taken, those pictures could have been taken anytime there was measurable precipitation. So let's, let's break this down. The special permit is required because the building is too large. Because the building is too large, developer doesn't have a way to filter water through permeable surfaces as required by code. What's the developer's solution? From their proposal, stormwater will be connected directly to the municipal collection system from the roof area. The peak rate of stormwater is being reduced due to a reduction in pervious area. It kind of sounds like they're doing us a favor, right? But draining the roof water directly into the city's stormwater system is a code violation. Furthermore, their statement is wrong. If you look at the existing sites surrounded by grass berms and gravel, you will see existing permeable surfaces.
That was a two-minute warning, sir. If you can wrap it up, please. Thank you.
What's that?
That was two minutes. So I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up as quickly as you can. Thank you.
Give me a little more time. I, from the Midwest, I speak slowly. I'm sorry, you know? I think it's important to get this on the record. And you can see that this floods, okay? It's very simple. And you're, you're allowing someone to pour more water into that system. There's water coming out of the system already. You can see that. You know it. It's against code. That code has to be enforced. It's also zoning issue. And that needs to be enforced. You'll hear more about this, I'm sure. But you have to ask yourself, you know, why are you doing this? You know, why would you do this? It, it defeats logic. It's not reasonable and it's a harm. Okay. Which is also part of the zoning. Don't do any harm. Okay. So I know my time is up, but I wanted to make my point. I'm a bit of a nerd. So I just wanted to point out, the last meeting, someone stated there are five-story buildings all over town. There are some, but they are rare. In fact, the pictures inserted in the staff memo you, you received before the last meeting, the three pictures labeled five-story buildings, all pictures of four-story buildings. Those buildings are 28 Center Street, 69 Prospect Street and 36 Bedford Terrace. If five-story buildings are everywhere, shouldn't it be easy to get pictures of them? And at least present that as a, you know, as the truth rather than a convenient prop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for continuing the hearing so that I might be able to attend. Forgive me if I repeat, I was not at the earlier hearing. My name is Hillary. My name is Hillary Conklin and I'm a property owner with my mom at 22 Butler Place. We are very close by to this project and even closer through the backyards. I was wondering if anyone had, had the time to walk the neighborhood? And hopeful that you would be able to. I was very lucky to have grown up in Northampton. Northampton has charm and character and lots of charming characters. People are drawn to it because of that. We look out for each other and we stand up. People want to live here and maybe work in Springfield, but never the other way around. This proposed structure appears to be a big city on original plan with little design value, plunked down on a precious vacant parcel. This proposed overdevelopment does not show me any thoughtful intent by the developer to join the community, but rather to shoehorn in a massive building adjacent to period homes where owners struggle to maintain and preserve the history of the city. The proposal reads less home and more medical office building. Close your eyes and try to picture what street or established neighborhood would accommodate scale this large. This is a big city structure with a parking garage. This is not a home for families. There's no green space. We who rent out apartments will report every bedroom equals one car. The structure must provide its own parking. Tough design task as the structure is too big for the parcel. These are narrow, narrow streets, never designed to accommodate such traffic load. And to plan for so many tenants to live without cars is not real. What is real is you serve on the board because you flourished in this community and earned the trust and respect of the residents. They trust you to make good decisions about smart growth. We recognize the developers are pushing hard here and also that the recent slight design modifications were not done because we were hurt. It was done to try to appease you. Please don't set any precedence with this application and don't underestimate the position you are in. This proposal, if approved, can never be undone. We ask you to stand up and support the community before you tonight. Ask the applicant to return with a more thoughtful design that one would find on a narrow street adjacent to historic homes in our city. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Fay Wolf. I live at 28 Phillips Place. And I was very happy to hear earlier in the evening that you were concerned about the harmoniousness of the project at the Y, that you wanted that, those trees to fit in and make it harmonious to the rest of the neighborhood. Because that is definitely a concern of mine about this project and I've spoken about it before, so I won't go on. I also thought it was fascinating that you would spend a, a lot of time discussing whether to have six trees or nine. I have a question about the construction staging of this. I, I don't know where they're going to do that. There is a wasteland behind my house that has big, big dirt mounds. When there's any wind, there are big dust clouds that come over our heads. There's still construction equipment there that has been there for several years. That seems to be the place where it will be done, but we haven't heard from the developers. We've asked them where that might happen, the staging, and there hasn't been any explanation for that. They've mentioned prefab units. Those would be brought in and I'm imagining put on the building with cranes. So that's also a concern, how that will affect traffic flow, pedestrians, safety. I'm imagining there'll be a lot of noise, a lot of dust, drilling, possibly pile driving to support this building, which will probably affect the foundations of our 175-year-old houses that were never built to sustain the kind of modern construction methods that will be used. Finally, I would just like to reiterate what my neighbor said, which is that when you leave this room, if you vote for this project, you will leave this room and it will probably never affect you again. It won't matter to you. It will affect the neighborhood, the people who live near it very deeply. And it will be a building that will be there for many, many years until finally someone decides that it probably has very little architectural value and probably should be taken down and made way for something probably bigger. Because I think why not have 10-story buildings in a historic neighborhood, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kimberly Rothenberg, Ward Three City Councilor. This is a mess. As you heard, they have council. I don't think your disclosure was accurate. I think you were there for the presentation and then left. From what my constituents tell me who are present. It's not so important for me, but it may come up in another venue. You have a little bit of support. You've got strong towns. You've got people who still think that this is making more housing. And that by making that more housing, you're meeting the demand that the public has, the virtue that the public has to create more places for people in this community to be able to live, for the kinds of people we want to have in our community, to be able to afford to live here. You've got this theory that the market will take care of things. And if you create new things, it doesn't really matter how much they cost because it'll open up more things. And as one of my constituents is probably going to tell you, and he told us to council last night, and he's right. That's a Republican way of thinking, right? That the market is going to make it all work. Don't worry. Trickle down housing. It's falling apart as a facade, as a thing that the public believes is working. It hasn't been working. You have no data to show that it's been working. I told you last time I was here that when I show up, it's because we're at an inflection point. It's because something is becoming popular enough that the majority of people here who are, who are Democrats in this town, right? I don't really care if you're a Republican. Strong towns was started by libertarians. A lot of the people in the local strong towns probably don't. A lot of the people in the local Strong Towns probably don't know that, and they're probably not libertarians. And I don't, I don't care what you are. But the one thing I do care about is that you, you are supposed to be representing this community. And you're, you're failing us with these projects. And you are changing that neighborhood irreparably and taking away a few units and adding a few parking spots is not addressing the big issue we have with the parking on that street. There is nowhere to park on that street already. That street is often impassable already. Just the other day, I got videos of cars that could not move down it. And I get those videos from that neighborhood all the time. So you've been told, we've had a hearing, they're going to pursue this and all the venues they need to pursue it. I wish that we could make this a cleaner, more collaborative situation. I wish that we could be more dynamic and use this process for its intended purpose, which is to get us to a plan that works rather than have us fighting one that doesn't. So thank you if you are able to be nimble and a little more dynamic now that we're starting to see that our planning and sustainability is not quite working the way that we hoped it would.
Thank you. Are there other folks here in chambers who would like to give comments on this project? All right, not seeing anyone. Um, we're going to move to Zoom. Should we, Carolyn, should we stop the share screen temporarily? That'll work too. Bear with us, just getting the technical setup, uh, working here in chambers. Sure.
So it looks like there are two people, Dan, Daniel, Dale.
Okay, Dan, you have the mic.
Daniel. Yeah, before you start running my two minutes, just a technical question. Can you guys hear and see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and I just, I want my neighbors that are in the room to know we can't see you. So any visual aids or anything, um, we can't see and then I, that's not going to be captured on the record, I guess. Unless we, we enter it into the record. Um, anyway, yeah, so my name is, uh, Dan Brian Dale. I live at 22 Phillips Place. It's actually the property that never gets talked about. Um, but it, this guy right here that uh, is now boxed in by your expansion of the commercial district. We're going to be completely blocked, uh, as far to the left and right and up and down as we can possibly see by this giant wall. Um, my driveway backs out into that whole traffic situation you guys were talking about. Um, my driveway was there, but it wasn't demarcated. Um, you know, that's me with my kids in the morning and just anyway, that's my introduction. I, my, I wish I could talk about something else. You know, the one rule that we were told at the meeting uh, last time, the one single rule to the public was that we shouldn't approach you guys, uh, that all talking about this project should take place within uh, this room. It is because of that that, um, I think a day or two after, when I saw this memo uh, that was sent to you, and actually the map doesn't demarcate the part of the parcel that actually blocks me in now, which is sort of important. I told the planning director, I hope she told you guys immediately. I asked her to quickly tell you, but I had to go through her because that's how we're supposed to interact with you guys. Um, it is fortunate that I was at the May 6th meeting of Strong Towns, which was advertised as being about the Holly Street residences publicly, um, and that I take very good notes. Um, I didn't want to do it this way. I've talked to, uh, the planning director and asked her to speak to the lawyer of the town who was under the false impression, um, that George Cahout left the, uh, Strong Towns meeting before there was a discussion of this project. Um, that's also what he told, uh, my uh, Ward Three representative, Quaverly Rothenberg. Um, that is also the false impression I believe the planning director was under. Um, I have since tried to correct that record as much as possible. Ben Spencer, uh, who I believe has entered, uh, something into the record, uh, I'm gonna just continue this point, please. Um, you know, Ben Spencer, who is obviously in support of the project, spoke for something like five minutes. George sat through that entire presentation that had visual aids and a projector. That is something that we don't have access to. Um, at the very least, you know, my neighbors deserve equal time to make these presentations to you guys if this is how this is going to go. Um, after Ben Spencer's presentation, Alex Bowman spoke for about four minutes on the project. Um, that was more of an open discussion. About two minutes into that, he made a reference to George maybe should leave the room. George laughed it off. He stayed for another two minutes. By the end, I believe George stayed somewhere between eight and 10 minutes uh, into a presentation about Phillips Place. It was when that presentation finally went to some sort of an open discussion and was sort of coming to an end. The board finally left. Uh, he, you know, his disclosure to you guys tonight is based on the advice of Alan Seawald, based on a false impression of the extent of this violation, uh, and the degree of it and how willful it was. Uh, the fact that this board member would repeat this falsehood to you guys again tonight. I have the receipts, like George, I was there. I saw you. You said bye to me when I left. You called me Ben. You know, I was there, dude, like Alex.
Dan, I hear what you're saying. This hearing is about the project. We understand that you dispute George's claim about this.
This hearing is about the approval, and part of the approval is this process. And I, I cannot consider this process to be legitimate if there is going to be this level of violation of the, you know, impartiality and objectivity of this board. Um, this was 10 minutes of persuasive argument from a conservative lobbying group.
Okay, Dan, I'm gonna have to stop you there. Thank you for your comment. We're gonna move on to, uh, Nina? I can't see the next person on screen.
Yeah, it looks like me.
Hi. Um, I'm Nina Shield. I live in Northampton. Um, as council member.
Nina, can you give us your street address, please? Thank you.
22 Phillips Place.
Thank you.
As Councilmember Rothenberg mentioned, the construction trucks are already showing up and blocking Phillips Place. On Monday morning, there was a dump truck parked on one side of the street and two landscaping trucks parked on the other, parked the wrong way, by the way, and in no parking zones that blocked entrance and exit from Phillips and Holly. And this was just for landscaping of the church, so it's worth considering what the street will look like during construction. Phillips is the official route for semi-trucks that can't fit under the bridge. And in a similar situation, a vehicle would have to sit on Holly without any flow of traffic in all three directions until the vehicles moved. This is obviously dangerous. It would prevent fire trucks from moving south of Bridge Street for one, not to mention illegal. Regarding the new 15-minute parking that was just mentioned, even though people already start parking where it says no parking, when people do park in that spot, it's almost impossible to get out of our driveway, which is directly across the street. We know this government and its agents love to create a pro versus anti-development narrative, but I must reiterate that none of us are opposed to contextually appropriate housing that does not cause undue burden to city infrastructure while you all in the developer wash your hands of the consequences. What we see here is, let's say, Mishigas. That one is for my Yiddish speakers in the house. As I mentioned to City Council last night, these public comments feel like shouting into the void because your disdain for non-sycophantic public feedback is so palpable, but maybe someone was visited by a ghost last night and is feeling benevolent. There is so much still wrong with this design per the Form-based Code's own standards. And I hope for everyone's time, energy, and budget that it will be remedied through the official oversight processes that exist for exactly that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Uh, was Judy next?
Um, yes.
Okay. Judy, we can't hear you. I think you're still muted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm Judy Tomasi, Phillips Place, direct abutter to the proposed project site in Northampton. Uh, just because the CBS zoning mentions the word "character" does not waive the planning board's responsibility to actually consider the impacts to the neighborhood character of the adjacent surrounding residential historic zone. The CBS Zone text does not waive the planning board's responsibility to ensure a harmonious relationship with the other buildings and community assets, such as the historic church across the street. This analysis is required by the Sustainable Plan and the City Code Site Plan Approval Criteria and Special Permit Criteria sections. The staff memo for this project, pages four and five, incorrectly implies that the CBS zoning does waive that analysis. Uh, as you know, last night, the City Council referred to your board the residents' rezoning petition from CBS to residential. I urge you to fully allow consideration of rezoning of the parcels back to residential. Um, the city messed up in 2022. You have the opportunity to get it right by being transparent and accountable to the citizens. The planning board, as you know, is responsible for ensuring compliance with the Sustainable Plan. Cherry picking a limited selection of sections from the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan from page five of the staff report on this project is not ensuring that compliance. Also, when I requested, um, city staff recently indicated that the files for the land use map and the plan are corrupt. If the land use plan is supposed to provide the city with a basis for making consistent decisions on land use into the future, how are you doing that? Um, so as the project's currently proposed, the findings for all of the special permits criteria and all of the site plan approval criteria cannot be made. So I urge you to deny the project. Um, if you choose not to deny it, I urge you to recommend further analysis by the applicant for meaningful project changes and/or for you to impose meaningful conditions to address.
Judy. Thank you. And looks like Colin.
Yes, hi, am I live? Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Colin Huffmeister. I live at 25 Phillips Place. I'm a direct abutter. Now, I am for additional housing. The original plan for the new condos next to my property was a welcome addition. During the last hearing in April, my neighbors and I addressed the criterion for the special permit and site plan that the Economic Development Corporation submitted for a proposal of 70-bedroom, five-story rental building. Collectively, my neighbors and I addressed the application and how it failed to meet the criteria that is set by the city. Issues such as privacy, blocking of sunlight, traffic congestion, lack of adequate parking, no provisions for delivery and moving trucks on this narrow street, and a waiver for the proper stormwater mitigation. Now, our concerns, as they relate to the special permit and the site plan, were ignored by this board and dismissed by the planning director. Instead of addressing these concerns, we were told the governor says we need housing. And a significant amount of time was spent asking about the type of surface that would be on the sidewalks and if there would be a bench to sit on. This is on record. Now, some will say incorrectly that we're nimbies. And I would ask those people, well, why are you not concerned that the condos that have already been approved have been put on hold? That's additional housing. And this is in the same neighborhood. So why would you grant the developer additional opportunity to build when they're not fulfilling the obligation to continue the development of housing on the condos? Now, I hope you have some independent thought tonight and exhibit uh, some, some real, real thought about this project, such as how it violates the guiding principles of sustainability in Northampton, and listen to the residents in this ward who will be drastically negatively affected by, by if this is approved. And not the unaffected who would tell you that this is good for the greater good. Progress into a wall or progress over a cliff is not real progress. Now, tonight you can do the right thing and either deny this project as proposed or delay until it can go to legislative matters and let the planning board be transparent and review the ordinance and restore some transparency to this process.
That's two minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap up. So here are some basic questions that you should be asking. Why is the approved housing, which the governor wants, the remaining condos I'm talking about, being halted? Where will construction vehicles and delivery trucks unload supplies? Where will dozens of workers park? Perhaps if you approve this, they should be parking in the parking garage that has been, uh, suggested to residents, the downtown parking garage. Now, how long will this project take? Nobody's asked that. If completed, where will moving trucks, Amazon UPS delivery trucks park? And how about trash removal trucks? Will the market just adjust and residents will wait for vehicles to move a new tenant in or move a new tenant out? Is that the plan? Lastly, I'd like to, uh, I'm gonna show just an idea. I'm out of time, but we would like to work with the developer. We would like to have more housing. But here's an aerial view. I don't know if you can see it. It's kind of bright here. And I think there should be an access road in this yellow. The building should be cut back. This is Phillips Place, and there should be an access road for delivery trucks and moving trucks. And that could be a spot for parking at night. I don't think this is showing too well. But in a continuance, I also have some other ideas I'd like to share with the board and with the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, do we have other hands from people who haven't spoken yet on Zoom? Okay. Uh, I will turn it back one more time to folks here in chambers. Is there anybody who hasn't yet spoken who would like to give comments? Okay, I will turn it back to Zoom to, uh, Deborah.
Can I be heard? My trackpad's not working. Okay, can I be heard?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. And I think, tell me, you know, can you just give me one second? Because my trackpad is literally not working and I can't even open my thing. So just, just wait to start timing me. Okay.
Okay.
Um, Deborah Berkovitz, 59 Phillips Place. Yeah, I, I want to concur that I found that slightly hallucinatory that, uh, spending that time on three trees and concerns, there's the deep concern you were showing residents for their sight, sightlines and screening when we're about to be faced with basically the largest building in Northampton blocking far more than our sightlines. So in theory, there's a separation of branches of government, except in our current federal government and in Northampton. And the chair opened the meeting saying that the board is the decision-making body and that the planning department representatives are just there to answer questions. And yet, the planning department provided what it was in essence, an executive order directing the planning board to approve this application, negating all concerns raised. At every turn, whether it is trying to share information with boards, get a meeting with commissions, pursue an ethics complaint, we have to go through the planning director or the mayor. The planning director repeatedly pushes her zoning agenda and then reinterprets project by project, which is exactly what the Form-based Code was supposed to avoid. And I just want to refer to a couple of specific things. Uh, there was a note that was written, protecting views, light, and air does not mean that views and light access remain unaltered. So I'd like to ask you, what about this project protects views, light, and air? The standards in FBC also, it said, do not require historic replication in order to be, quote, "compatible" or "be consistent." Each new building would be representative of the period in which it is built, just as it is in existing conditions in each neighborhood of the city. We're not asking for historic replication. And if you had a moment right now, how would you answer honestly to yourselves, in what way is this project compatible or consistent with the neighborhood? Two days ago, 12 minutes apart, 18-wheelers came down the street, as they do multiple times a day, and drove over the curb at Phillips Place and Palmer Terrace. Trucks cannot make this turn already and have difficulty managing the street. In this is, we have a planning department, and no one has addressed that this is a formal truck escape route, and multiple 18-wheelers go down it every day. No one is considering the fire and police vehicle access, short or long term. When we have safety problems, as we absolutely will, it will be on each one of you. All criteria need to be met to approve this special permit. It doesn't require a lawyer or a planning department director to interpret what is one of the clearest pieces of language.
That's two minutes, Deborah.
Wrap up. Uh, I formally request, since each and every criterion needs to be met to approve this special permit, that each member is required to vote on each criterion. And that a justification should be provided by each person for each one. You should not be allowed to approve this project just because you want to, but because it conforms with the zoning guidance that you're supposed to be adhering to. And I would like to point out, the Director Mish went and gave a nice presentation as we were told to Strong Towns and has ignored a request to have a simple conversation with us that is hardly unbiased. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We've heard a few questions and comments here. Let me start with a few of them referring them over to you, Carolyn, if I may. Let's start with what I think are some of the more straightforward aspects. Can you talk a little bit about, some folks had questions about construction staging, noise, dust, et cetera. I know there are standards in the city about when construction can take place. So can you talk a little bit about that and also about the planning board's purview in that area?
Sure. The construction impacts, so noise and dust mitigation and time of day for construction, vehicles blocking streets, all of those are, that's a violation. Those are handled through the building department because it's really under the building permit. And so there, this is not the planning board's jurisdiction. I mean, it's for any project. Builders have to comply with building code as it relates to dust control, traffic control, ensuring that the runoff is that the sediments aren't running off the site. So anytime there are those issues, they should be directed directly to the building department. If, you know, I mean, that's the direct line. Ideally, it would be great for an open line of communication with the contractor on site, but that doesn't always happen. And so the simplest thing is really to contact the building department. There's also, so this picture is a good example of what's the DPW requires in terms of protecting catch basins. And so these need to be emptied regularly. It looks like this one hasn't been emptied and that's why what's causing the, and that's, I'm guessing, I don't know for sure, but that's typically what happens. So that's another thing that that's a DPW call that could be made.
Yeah, I was going to note in my construction experience, this is a silt sack, which they put in the catch basin to catch sediment from, you know, runoff from construction sites. So it fills up with sediment, so it doesn't go into the storm system. And if it gets too full, then you can kind of see that ponding water there. So this is this orange thing around the catch basin gets lifted out, emptied, put back in to again, protect our our city stormwater system from excess construction sediment.
I just want to clarify for the people on Zoom, since you don't have this piece of paper in front of you. We're looking at a sheet that was passed out by one of the members of the public who gave comment that shows storm drains at Phillips Place and Holly Street with some water pooled above where Chris is pointing out those are, what did you call them, silt basins?
Silt sacks.
Silt sacks that create a kind of orange line around the storm drain.
It's kind of a bag that hangs from the frame of the storm drain hanging below it. So the silt can go in and then the water filters out.
Thank you, Chris. That's helpful. Another question was raised about the fact that a stormwater permit has been issued for this project. That's also outside of our purview. We do not issue stormwater permits. That is entirely in the purview of the DPW. We cannot issue a permit until a stormwater permit has been issued. But the details of that and the approval of that are entirely outside of our control.
Yeah, and this was an amendment. So there was a permit issued for the other part of sort of the site. The way the city looks at it is a is a common plan of development. So the applicant had to amend the permit. And so this was an impervious, completely impervious parking lot and it's being modified. So the application for an amendment then incorporates the redevelopment of this site and conversion from a two minutes parking lot to building plus green space. There were no waivers that I'm aware of that were granted for that stormwater permit.
Thank you.
Carolyn, can I just ask if a if a neighbor is having trouble with dust from construction sites or flooding from stormwater controls in city streets, things like that? Who is the body in the city that they should ask?
So two, two different. So anything onsite with the building dust related, those concerns and complaints go directly to the building department. So anybody can call up and notify the department that this, there's a problem happening on a construction site. For anything that has to do with utilities, that would go to Department of Public Works. And that the catch basins relate to that.
Related question. The just to get to the regarding stormwater management. Is there any difference in impermeable surface between what currently exists and what the building would produce?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the applicant might be able to pull up the site plan and show the difference of the existing footprint. I think it's on the attachment of the existing footprint of the parking lot versus the building. The building doesn't take up the entire lot. But also there's no, as far as I recall, there's no existing pretreatment of the runoff that's coming off of that lot. But that would be a good question for.
And the lot, runoff from the lot is regulated how? I mean, in in ordinance, is there anything that says anything about how that runoff should be managed from the existing parking lot? I'm trying to get at the point of is, is there, is there any change to stormwater management really here?
I mean, there is a change in the, I don't think it's managed currently, although I think the applicant can confirm that. So it's just sheet flow, I believe. And so now it will be controlled and directed.
And that sheet flow is acceptable?
Well, it's a preexisting condition before we had stormwater management requirements.
Thank you.
If they were designing a place of the existing parking lot, there would be much stricter stormwater standards that they would have to meet. But the existing parking lot is not meeting any of those, except for maybe deep sump catch basins in the parking lot, or maybe it just runs off into the street.
I think it's sheet flow, but these guys would know because they've studied it. Yeah.
So
I think it is sheet.
Yeah, Mass DEP considers rooftop runoff, rain that lands on a rooftop and is captured in a storm drain and then piped
Yep.
somewhere as clean water. So that's, doesn't need to be treated at all, or it is essentially treated.
Right.
That is an improvement in, and again, we don't look at stormwater at all.
No, no, but I'm trying to respond to the question. There were, it wasn't quite a question, it was a criticism that was raised.
Right, so so I think it is, it's very much an improvement over existing conditions because instead of just impervious surface that has no treatment of the stormwater, now we have rooftop collection, which is all essentially clean.
But staying on stormwater, Chris, if I may, I thought our golden rule was that no stormwater could leave the premises and enter into the city system.
Again, we don't deal with stormwater, but there there wouldn't be an increase in stormwater to the city streets. So because the impervious area is about the same.
About the same.
Yeah.
Increase.
That's part of the evaluation that DPW does and what's part of the amendment is sort of looking at the existing conditions, the precondition and the postcondition. And if there's a preexisting, so in a sense, it's much easier to meet the stormwater standards if you've got a really bad existing condition.
Yeah.
And then you're creating a much better design in the post construction condition.
So is that?
Also in downtown, it's very different in terms of, because, you know, there, you don't have, you're not spread out into the suburban area where you can just create a big detention pond and keep everything on site. So the the parameters are different for downtown.
And is this all relevant? We got an exhaustive letter from a Mr. Francisco Palomo about the the treatment of the water and the stormwater plan. And the DPW is privy to that letter too.
It's all on, yeah, in the system, but they have specific rules that they evaluate permit applications against.
Carolyn, there were some other questions raised about the interface of this project and the condos that have been approved and at least partially built, but not fully built. My understanding is that our approval of this project has nothing to do with what's happening with the rest of the site. We're looking at the the plan that's in front of us for this particular parcel or parcels. I guess. First, can you confirm that? And secondly, if that is the case, is there a place for people who have questions about what's happening over there to go, I guess, directly to the developer?
So it is, you're looking at a, at the site in front of you and that's the permit. It has no, there's no bearing on what status the developer has with a different project. So you're evaluating the application to determine whether it meets the standards in Central Business Side Street District. You know, projects take various times for market absorption all over the city. So it's not, you know, if that's something that has not been and isn't part of the purview. But yes, they could ask why the phasing hasn't, you know, moved along at sort of a regular pace.
At some point, does that permit expire for them if they don't build everything?
No, I mean, they've substantially started the project. So that's the trigger. So the, they might have to reapply for building permits if they took building permits. But my understanding is they did phased building permits. So, but the planning board permit, once it's exercised through substantial start of a project, then it doesn't expire. And you can always build. I mean, there's no time limit to build out and you can, you know, sometimes applicants change, you know, what they're building, what the build out is.
We heard some other questions about fire and safety access to this property and to the street in general because of the width of the road and the parking situation. Did the fire department review this project?
So before applicants submit, we have review with fire department, building department to look at concepts, making sure that standards are met for access. And that was done.
Great. Rich?
I got caught by a comment about pile driving and I'm just wondering if we can ask the applicant if there's, if they anticipate that and then we could before, but before we do that, if we could ask staff, is there any ordinance that addresses those kinds of impacts?
Means of construction, yeah. Not that the planning, not that it's under the planning board's jurisdiction.
So how is that mediated if that's an issue?
So there are building permit standards that, you know, again, when the applicant files for a building permit, they're going to show how they're going to the method for construction. And so that's done in that purview. You know, an example that I recall in the last 10 years, maybe it's longer than that, was a concern when, before the lumberyard was built. There were two buildings right next to each other on Pleasant Street, the old, the original lumber company. And then to three story brick building, they, it wasn't a party wall, but it was a touching wall. And so the adjacent property owner was very concerned because they were going to demo and then rebuild. And so all of that was figured out sort of during those construction plans. And there was a lot of conversation between the two property owners about ensuring, you know, that they, everybody understood the process that they would go through. So all of that is just, you know, part of that construction management.
That's handled by the building department? Okay, thank you. I will say from personal experience up in Leeds, there was a large project going on in road building and blasting. And we were advised to take pictures of our foundation before that happened and then to show afterwards that, and you could show a direct correlation. Nothing happened, of course, but that was one of the, you know, it shouldn't come to that, but, you know, kind of a buyer beware.
Carolyn, there was also a question raised about sort of how to interpret the your comments related to protecting views, light and air. I know that's something that's come up in the past and I'm sure will come up again. So could you give us in the public a little bit more kind of context on that?
Yeah, so those are really broad, general special permit criteria that and they are, they've been in, they've been adopted in Northampton, they're used sort of everywhere in zoning language. The idea in the Northampton zoning ordinance is that as implementation of the Sustainable Northampton Plan has moved forward through regulatory amendments, the idea is to be much more specific about what is it about special permits that the board should consider, that the community should consider and what, what makes, what is that threshold? How do people get over that threshold? Because it's confusing for the public, it's confusing for applicants. What does it mean to meet these standards? So the form based code, development of the form based code was really intended to say, here are all the things that the city wants. All this hard work was done at the front end to say, if you meet these, all of these design criteria, you will essentially be meeting our objectives for site plan and for special permit. And so those are, they're only applicable in the districts in which they've been adopted. And then the broad standards are applicable throughout the rest of the city for other site plans and special permits that don't have their own specific criteria. So another example is the two family form based code stuff. So if you meet that, then you'll get the permit and but therefore you're meeting globally, the site plan and special permit criteria. So it was really in those, the form based code is intended to say, okay, because we are talking about the massing and the and the relationships with the public realm and the private realm, and there's landscaping buffers and there's step, you know, step backs on edges of districts. That's how we're going to meet that protection of the, you know, air, light and views is by thinking about those considerations of building location and how that's set on a site.
Thank you. Were there other questions or comments that we heard from the public that folks want to discuss or other questions or comments from among us that we'd like to discuss or bring back to the applicant? Rich?
I have an incomplete note on on one expression of concern about a waived analysis and I, it went too fast for me to get it. But I thought it sounded like it was worth addressing.
Is it about stormwater?
No, this was further down by a person named Tomasi. I guess we could ask the commenter to come up again and clarify. I don't want to, is the, is the hearing still open? I just wanted to make sure we covered that. We were addressing as many comments as we need to.
Yes. I I don't have a note about that, about anything other than stormwater. So if it was about something else, I missed it.
So I want So I want, you know, I'm hearing for the first time in this hearing that there is a citizen petition to change the zoning of the parcels that are in consideration for this hearing. And then that was at city council, which seems like the right place for it to be. But city council told people that somehow we I don't, we make recommendations to city council and city council actually votes on things, but we don't change the zoning. So I don't, I don't, I'm confused, but putting that all aside, if if we, you know, said we wanted to change the zoning here, does that have any impact on this project in front of us, which was put forth with the zoning that's in place now? Because this is the zoning for this project in front of us. So we can't like change the zoning retroactively.
No, so there, so as Jana mentioned at the beginning of the hearing, there the what's in front of you is has been submitted based on the zoning in place. And you have to follow the procedures for reviewing that application. A petition was just introduced to council last night that as all zoning amendments, it gets referred out for public hearing with planning board and and also to legislative matters, which is a subcommittee of city council. Typically, there are joint public hearings, and we're going to talk later about the schedule for the summer and, you know, including a joint public hearing on this item. And there may be other zoning amendments as well that come forward by that time. But it, you know, it doesn't, I mean, you just move on and whatever happens with that, there are. You know, if, so this involves a special permit and a hearing. There is a relationship to when property gets vested or projects get vested, meaning they can move forward despite what changes happen. And the vesting happens. It goes back to the date of a special permit adoption. So if the zoning changes and the special permit has been granted, then even if the zoning changes, this project could go forward. If the project is doesn't denied and the zoning changes, then they'll come back for something new. There's also a threshold, a timing where if it goes back to the zoning, sort of goes back to the notice of the, the date of the publication for the zoning amendment. So if the zoning changes, then there's a look back to the first date. So whatever was in place on the date of the advertisement for the zoning change. If every, if things are in place, then then they're good to go. If they're not, then they have to abide by the new zoning. So there's a you know, there's a timeline that's interwoven in that, but you know, you need to review this in a separate space and then the zoning on that track.
So can I say that one more time? If if we were to deny the special permit and for some reason even deny the site plan, the applicant, because they filed under this, the current zoning, if they came and refiled again with a slightly different plan to seek our approval, they would still be under that previous zone, the current zoning, regardless of whether it gets changed or not, because they filed back in May, right?
No, if they have to refile. They'll refile based on the current zoning, but if there's something else in process that's been, you know, if it's already, if the public hearing has been advertised, but no decision has been made on the zoning, and then the zoning changes, it becomes retroactively effective to the date of the advertisement, which could be before or after.
Right, okay.
Be the middle of a
To their original filing and the original public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
But just to confirm for us tonight, what's important is that our for us to complete our role here and our due diligence is to continue the hearing under the standards that are currently in place. That is our only option.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Whatever path that ends up taking. Yep. Okay.
So I have a couple of questions that are kind of around the Form Based Code. And this building and the side street zoning. One is about the the windows. I mean, there's a assumption that there's a lot of, we call them fenestrations along the front walk. There's not a lot along Phillips. I don't think it meets our zoning or our Form Based Code along Phillips Place. It certainly it's met along Holly Street, correct? But I don't think along Phillips Street, the the amount of glass there. And also, I think the, I think there's a number of pedestrian doors that need to be along our Form Based Code within 50 feet of each other on Phillips Place, if I read it correctly. And it was explained to me that we couldn't have pedestrian doors on Holly Street because of the slope of Phillips, I mean, on Phillips Place because of the slope of the building. So so we're not granting them a waiver not to align themselves with our Form Based Code because it, or are we allowing them a waiver because of the geographical limitations, the building limitations?
So essentially for the entrance, I'll find that, but then you would be sort of, you're evaluating the plan in front. So if it doesn't, so again, this is sort of like, here's the cookbook, you do it, you you go on your way. Or here's the cookbook, but it doesn't quite fit because of the particular unique qualities of the site, what have you, the board has the ability to approve an alternative standard or alternative design, I should say.
Okay. So twice now in the recent months, the one on State Street in Elm, and also this one, we've approved these ground floor parking garages that don't have windows, they're not retail stores like we like we had kind of envisioned might happen along those places. So we are kind of modifying that zone Form Based Code because of the need for parking, because of the need for apartment housing, but we are kind of not sticking to the letter of the Form Based Code. I just want to make sure I'm seeing that correctly and my other board members see it.
I don't have the code in front of me, and I guess I should find it. But I remember with the State Street one, there's also talk about like vegetation and stormwater management, there is, there is other language in there that we were hanging our hat on, as I recall.
That in lieu of, in lieu of windows or in lieu of doors, we were providing planters there to help with the stormwater mitigation?
See, I
Yeah.
speaking a little bit out of turn. I have it in front of me.
Right, I'm I just want to somehow get be clear amongst the board as we might see more of these happening, you know, the first floor parking.
So just, so if there's one thing that may be missing and might need to be tweaked from the Side Street and the Gateway District and also Florence Village General District is there's discussion about park, surface parking and how to screen that. There's not a discussion about design criteria for covered parking or structured parking. So in this instance, you know, instead of having a big, open asphalt parking lot, you're actually, the applicant's utilizing the space more efficiently by putting units on top. So in a sense, masking it that way. But there isn't, you know, there aren't specific elements about how you address, and parking is allowed as a use in these districts. And so one of the things you, you know, that might be helpful is to, you know, talk about that in the in the Form Based Code, because there will be parking in these districts. And given the other criteria in the Form Based Code, the goal is to get structures and building, not to have big surface.
Big surface parking.
And so to think about, well, how do you do that in a way that still sort of creates that interface, you know, pedestrian scale interface with those openings? And so the pedestrian in terms of the door, so yes, in that instance, you'd say, okay, instead of a surface lot, this is going to be sort of varied parking. And is this an appropriate way to mask that? And then the other piece in terms of pedestrian entrances. One every 50 feet is for the Side Street District. So on that one side, again, sort of, that's the objective, but you've got a parking structure, you know, surface. So you wouldn't have an entrance at that for a surface parking lot, right? You'd have the building and then you'd have this big surface parking lot. This is covered.
True.
So you just need to evaluate those different scenarios. And again, the idea of having flexibility with the Form Based Code is zoning is very rigid otherwise and is, and if you, it's, it's hard to create those waivers. You and and you're always going to come up with, someone's going to come up with a different scenario about how to address things. So that's why you have the ability to grant those waivers in the Form Based Code based on scenarios that are presented to you. And then it's up to you to determine whether you think that's in a, but that still meets overall the general performance standards within the Form Based Code.
So do you recommend we spec out those waivers? When we're dealing with it and? I, we, it's still open, right? I might ask the applicant regarding the three pedestrian access on the rear side of the lot. And on the front side, we can't do it because of the slope. How can we do it on the rear side of the lot?
So I can, can I?
Slope?
It actually steps up and then there's a step into the building. Let me, can I, am I screen sharing? I don't. Can Carolyn, is there a way I can?
It's not letting you share?
It says I'm still sharing.
Oh, so why don't you exit?
Oh, I can stop sharing.
Stop sharing and reshare.
I don't mean to drag it out, but I
Okay. Yeah, no, I can, I can explain. So right here, this entrance is still at the same level of grade, but then the sidewalk does start sloping up here. And then, once you enter this stairwell, there's actually a couple of steps down to get to the garage or you start going up. So, I mean, in in theory, the stairwell could be moved over to the Phillips Place side, but then you'd have the stairwell there. That's how that's done, I guess, is this sidewalk does slope up, but when you come in here, you come into a small landing. You either go down, I think it's three or four steps into the garage, or you continue up to to the upper floors.
So on the backside, when you come, you just come in off the the grass level, the sidewalk level, the garage is, you don't have to have a step up or a step down. The pedestrian access comes right into the garage.
Where are you?
Backside, where you have those three pedestrian doors.
Yes, right. So it goes straight into either the bike room, the garage. But if you go further up, as it starts to slope up, if you come into this stairwell here, you're a couple of feet up. So you either go down a few steps into the garage or continue up. So this landing is actually not at the garage level.
Pointy head as well. Hello, Nereus from KDI. So the site on on the back of the building slopes less than the street. So Phillips, it's like the highest point on the site on the on the Phillips Place. And yes, mainly is the we sort of like leading the Evers towards the back with the intermediate landing in that particular back stair. But it's less, it's, I think it's a couple of feet or three, maybe feet on the back versus if you take like the Phillips Place, it slows more. Yeah. It's somewhere evident on the grades.
Um, I might just follow up on one other comment that was made that by one of the commenters about the bike racks. And as a cyclist, right, and especially with electric bikes becoming much more prevalent, you can't hoist those easily up above your head unless there's some kind of automated way to do that. So I wonder if if they've been able to add two parking spaces. I wonder, instead of adding perhaps this one parking space and increase in the size of the bike room to allow for more bike parking that isn't as onerous?
We could, you know, eliminate one parking space and add more bike parking potentially. The other thing we were considering is within the 20 Holly Street amenity space, having additional bike storage there. So maybe for folks who don't commute with their bike, but get their bike out on the weekend, you know, across the street at 20 Holly, those, we would have an additional bike room there is one thing we're looking at, just because we understand that we may need more bike storage.
Definitely. Okay. So then we might then condition that, that there would be additional parking across the street in Holly.
That'd be fine. Like you said, we understand it's not quite as convenient, but
Yeah.
Good enough.
And presumably there would be a way for folks to access that at any time. It wouldn't just be during, I think you said that the rental office would be there and some other things would be there. Would they have continuous access? I want to go on a midnight ride.
Yeah, the intent is that renters would have FOB access to that space as an amenity space, both for the gym. At least late evening and early morning, sometimes those places close, say midnight to 5:00 AM, but not just business hours.
Okay.
And can I ask a question about the the building frontage occupancy in the build to zone percentage? On the zoning summary chart, a requirement is 75%, which means that 75% of the building face has to be within five feet of the property line. And then here, here it says you're either at 61 or 72.1%, depending on the canopy. But I'm wondering if that's only on Holly Street that you're making that calculation? Because it it sure looks to me like on Phillips, that like the entire length of Phillips, you're within that five foot maximum setback. But maybe I'm
I
looking at it.
Quickly, I think you're right. I mean, because of that corner. I don't know, John, if you can speak to that anymore, but
Because I think you, it would be better for you to meet that requirement than just report the Holly Street frontage. I mean, it's a corner lot, so you have frontage on both streets, right?
Yes, and the building, but you're, I mean, the bill, you're saying that the the parking lot side of the building or the entrance is, is still two to three feet off of the property line. It includes sidewalk plus whatever that dimension is.
I mean, I'm looking at the the line on the plan that's labeled five foot maximum setback. So that's
And it's, and, okay, I'm not looking at the plan.
I think the, if I could, John Furman with VHB, I think what's skewing that calculation too, is that if this were a lot that wasn't a corner, that front back in that building would probably go across the whole front. But because we're on an intersection, you have to hold back, I think, 26 feet from the corner. So you have site distance, but that calculation still accounts for where there's no building. So that's why it's it's less than it, but So that's why it's, it's less than it, but you are exactly right. When you look at Phillips, we are more than 75% of that frontage. Holly Street, we're, we're close and we broke it down into the canopy and the front wall because the canopy extends further. But we're, I don't believe we meet, quite meet 75% on Holly Street just because of the building width and that, and that setback.
But overall, for the, for the, your entire frontage, because you have two frontages.
Right.
You are way above.
Way above it. Way above it, yeah. So if, if we didn't have to set the building back for the intersection, we would meet it on Holly.
Sure.
But we had to hold the frontage back so that you had that sight distance. Couldn't extend the building there.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just trying to think from a, a condition or a waiver standpoint.
Yeah.
It would be a lot easier if you gave us the entire frontage calculation instead of just the Holly Street frontage calculation. So I guess I'm asking my colleagues on the board, do we need to include waiver language about Holly Street only because of, you know, sight distances at the corner? Or do we just kind of consider that we know that the overall frontage weigh, weigh, see 75%?
Yeah, and ask them to edit their revised or calculations on the next set of plans, the final set of plans. Sure, I, I'd be happy with that.
Okay.
Just find us to just say, have the total frontage on Holly, total frontage on Phillips. And then what's 75% of that is, and then what our actual is.
Yeah. That's easy.
Yeah.
We will, 95%, you know. A lot.
Yep.
All right. Thanks. Thanks for the clarification.
We, I think this is for the applicant again. We saw revised plans that stepped back. And I think you mentioned that there are balconies there now, which there weren't before. And the balconies are accessible to some of the tenants.
So these balconies on this face of the building will be for dedicated tenants. There'll be a, a wooden screening between, so there'll be two balconies on each level. The balcony on the front roof deck at the front of the building that's shown here is of the common roof deck.
Yeah, that, and that was on your previous. So sorry, but so the new ones are on the backside.
Yeah, and though, correct. And those are just accessible to those, those unit tenants. So they're not common.
Yeah. So what the butters are gaining in a little extra light and a little lessening of the mass there. They may make up with a little extra noise at cocktail hour, but hopefully it'll be quiet. None of the other apartments have balconies or outdoor space, right?
Correct, just that, that shared space at the front, there's a small portion that's for a single unit. And then the larger portion is the shared. So yes, I mean, we would hope that the folks who live in these units may make use of the outdoor space. It's a full parapet, meaning that, you know, if you're sitting at a small table here on your balcony and you're down at our neighbors or on the street, you wouldn't see up to those folks unless they were standing at the edge of that wall because it's, it will be the 42 inch and it'll be solid, not, not open. So if they're sitting at a table, it would be relatively private for both parties.
On those balconies, what's the lighting situation? The outdoor lighting?
We have, we, we did not actually update the photometric plan with these. We had a photometric plan for the roof balcony here that had some down lighting. We can update the photometric plan that'll have similar lighting. That will minimize how much lighting comes off that balcony that, you know, it lights enough for folks to sit out there, but that it doesn't extend beyond that area. So we can update that photometric plan.
We've heard a lot from the discussion both this week and prior to this about the, the special permit criteria. You know, there are seven pieces in the special permit criteria. Usually we don't go through these. I don't know if the board wanted to take any time to go through those and understand our rationale for approving a special permit, if that's where we're going. Or if any board members are thinking of not approving the special permit, then which one of these would be specified? We haven't done that in the past. It could be pretty time consuming.
Just to clarify, again, it goes back to the form based code because there's such specific standards in the form based code that essentially is what you're reviewing as opposed to the broad special permit criteria. So there's an assumption that if you meet, you know, in this case, it's about building footprint or sing, and, and it's about a single use that's that big of a footprint. So, you know, I just want to make sure you're looking at the form based code as sort of, that's the overarching document about approvals or, or a larger footprint than 10,000 square feet.
Right. But our fellow citizens always use the special permit criteria to, to use as a reason for this or for that. You know, the, the, how it, how it bears a positive relations to the public convenience, how the distribution of sanitary and storm sewage collection, all of those have been talked about tonight. And, you know, we've addressed it to some degree. And we, the board may be. But when you look at it here in, in English and black and white, you know, there are things that come up that I think often needs to be kind of confirmed, that even though it says location of driveway openings, relation to traffic and adjacent seats accessed by emergency vehicles, the arrangement of parking and loading spaces and provisions for persons with disabilities. So we've talked about all of that tonight. We've agreed that emergency vehicles can access it, but moving vehicles can access it. Those kinds of things, I think sometimes just need to be reaffirmed that we've looked at. Regardless of the form based code, we also have this ordinance here on around special permit that we have to be mindful of.
Right, and they're not inconsistent, so I'm not suggesting that, yeah.
No.
George, can you give me the number of what you're looking at? For some reason I'm having, I'm tracking down exactly where I want to be.
350 dash 10 dash 1.
Thank you.
And C.
Of C, right, C and then underneath C. Yeah.
Thank you.
And, you know, and I understand that if we don't approve the special permit, it doesn't change the mass of the building that much. It may, they may reduce the size of the footprint, but they may also make it much taller or a different configuration. It's still going to be a large apartment complex just under our site plan review.
Right.
For sure.
And the truth is that even under the URC, again, it would have to be configured differently. But conceivably, the building could be of the same size, but just provide many fewer units.
Right. Yep. No, and number seven here, if applicable, the requested use will promote city planning objectives to the extent possible and will not adversely affect those objectives. So I know one of the big objectives certainly is around housing for sure. And that's gonna, we're promoting that by looking favorably at a, an application like this. All right, just wanted to bring that up, make sure we're all looking at it.
Thank you, George. I think from my perspective, the raising in the staff memo is helpful in terms of thinking about, does the excess footprint still meet the criteria? And would a smaller footprint, but a taller building somehow meet it better or meet it in a way that the larger footprint doesn't? And because I think that, you know, is really the, at the heart of why this triggers a special permit to begin with and then the heart of what we're looking at here. And from my perspective, and I think based on some of what we've heard from people in the public, the, I don't think that a taller building in this place would have more a larger fan club than this current project does. And I think that this building meets the criteria that are set forth in the form based code. And I appreciate the work the applicant has done to address some of the concerns that we brought forward last time relative to that sort of interface with the public realm and the step downs, especially at the edge of the property, I think, do really help to scale that at the edge of the property where it is abutting this, the more residential part of the district as opposed to what it's facing on the front, which is a much more, you know, commercial and more modern set of neighbors. So thank you for that.
I would like to move to close the public hearing.
And just so you know, there were, there are three people who've already given comment online. So just there have raised their hands for a second round. So I don't know if you wanted to go ahead and, you know, just acknowledge that.
Okay. I guess I want to turn that to my fellow board members, if folks feel like we want to entertain.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely, let's keep to two minutes.
Okay.
Draw my motion.
All right.
Well, we have to open it up too.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes. Okay, so yes, thanks folks for your patience. I know some people have had your hands raised for a really long time. We are going to do a second round of public comment. I'm gonna, again, and I think more strictly this time, ask, ask folks to stick to the two minute timeline of it here. And again, please focus on new information that hasn't yet been presented. Is there anybody here in chambers who would like to give a second round of comments or a first round of comment?
Thank you. I just want to clarify someone, some things. The storm water, the flooding predates the orange bags. As a matter of fact, we have photos from the developer from 1920, from 2021 that shows flooding when they did their plans for the church, demolishing the church and putting in townhouses. The flooding is clearly there. The problem is that it's over capacity and also the engineering, there's a swale there. So it's between the two drains that there's always, almost always water. And their plans don't really remediate that, but that's something that could perhaps be addressed. Some of the things I noticed, you switched between the, the special permit and site permit in the previous meeting. That was what was under discussion, right? That was what was in your agenda, that you would be addressing those things. For this meeting, you switched to the form based code. So I don't know why that was, but we addressed all our comments to those two things because that was the rule. All right. Now, the form based code provides a path so that people, and that's how it's stated. And that you worked a long time, you hired a consultant during the pandemic and who wrote it and y'all passed it. And so that provides a path. And I think Carolyn has stated that the most important thing about that is it, you know, integrates projects into the neighborhood. But what we're hearing is that it provides a path, but you don't always follow it. All right. And then finally, all commentary from the planning department in the person Carolyn that we've heard tonight is advocacy for the project. And this was true the last time. So that's all on the public record. Thank you very much.
Ms. Quaverly-Rothenberg again, the Ward Three City Councilor. I don't know why you said that the emergency vehicles and parking, we agree with the dress. I don't think that was addressed. It's not passable right now in the winter. Even for small cars, like it's really crazy, you guys haven't addressed this. It's also your, your proceedings tonight give the impression that you really hold the hand of the wealthier Massasoit neighborhood and really wave off Ward Three. And I'm very familiar with Ward Three. I drive all of its streets and try to see what kind of condition things are in frequently, right? That's my ward. It's a poorer ward. The housing there tells a story. And we aspire to be a city that treats people with equal dignity throughout the city. But we struggle with our unconscious implicit biases. We all do, and it's very hard to see our own, but it's not that hard for others to see. So I ask you to have some humility around that. And it just doesn't seem that this body is going to be able to see beyond looking to Mish, looking to Seawald. You know, I made recommendations at your last meeting that you seek your own legal advice. And, you know, I am the city, right? I'm a city councillor, so I can't say I'm glad that they're gonna take this to court, right? Cause I, I'm a party. I can't say come and sue me. But I am looking forward to having other venues disentangle the issues of process here that are so many that we can't go through them tonight, especially because the timer just went off. But I am grateful that this neighborhood has the tenacity and the community to be able to pool their resources, even though we're a modest ward and that we all will get to see how this plays out. But I'm terribly disappointed in myself. I'm disappointed in the city of Northampton tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Roth, Rothenberg. Are there other folks here in chambers who would like to give comment? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to folks on Zoom. Dan, Daniel, I think you were first.
All right, yeah, there was, there was some question about foundations falling apart. I am the house that's surrounded on now three sides by O'Connell Construction. They just used a bulldozer to lay down sod next to a retaining wall that is now cracked in like four different places. They had somebody out to come. When that retaining wall breaks, that's my whole yard. My foundation is crumbling. The previous owners who were there when they started construction next door saw an arch crack and cracks in the wall. Of course, they didn't tell us about it until we'd moved in. I've told the city, I've told the planning department. Sarah LaValle hung up on me when I asked if I could get in touch with a resource in historic preservation. The city council knows, I've even mentioned it to you guys, there is no recourse for this. I am on my own. They've told me to get a civil engineer and that's it. So I don't have recourse when they break my 1850s house with their construction vehicles. There is not recourse for that. I can't take a picture of my foundation that's been crumbling. I can't take a picture of my foundation that's been crumbling now for five years. We talked about no drainage. When they bought the site, the blue is grass, the orange are trees. These are healthy maple trees of 25 and 30 diameter. Kids used to tap them for, for syrup. So these trees were cut down and all of this grass and trees were replaced with gravel last year. It was actually during red tail hawk seasons, which is a bit of a controversy. But that's why there is no drainage and all of this green space will be replaced by sidewalk. So there is going to be a significant change there. There has been significant damage to my house. They're gonna have a rooftop where they are gonna party because it's gonna be full of college kids who don't have cars. Those are the only people who are gonna be there whose parents can pay for these incredibly overpriced studios with a gym and a movie theater. You know, we submitted our ordinance weeks ago. The council actually delayed it beyond the legal window because Seawald said, ah, well, it's fudgeable. They're trying to delay publication as much as possible. We actually submitted months ago, um, but we're told to do it through councillors. Ultimately, that's what delayed the publication. Publication of our ordinance would allow a full hearing on the rezoning that was done during the pandemic without proper notification, without legal notification. We've been trying to just do an investigation of that. When the planning director says in these districts, what you have to realize is that the Central Side Street District has just been inched into a residential district, an old, very sleepy residential district. So in these districts, Central Side Street can handle street side parking. Okay, but that's not where these people are gonna try to park. They're gonna be parking on our teeny little road, which, as everybody's explained, is impassable. So Form Based Code be damned. You know, this is probably spot zoning and it's not even covered by the actual Form Based Code initiatives, clearly.
Thank you, Dan. Deborah.
Hi, Deborah Berkavitz. I want to say that everything to do with this smells so bad. And I was shocked that there was a credible allegation about a complete ethics violation. I was very careful to not communicate with anybody on the planning board in the last month and that the chair interrupted the speaker and said that it wasn't relevant to the process when we know that Sam recused himself just because he wasn't there. I am just so horrified by the, by the continuous stinkiness of this project. I also want to say that even the disrespect of the suggestion that, oh, well, the residents probably wouldn't want something taller with fewer units. Well, you know what? How about if you ask us something? You're not interested in asking us. How about if you have a neighborhood meeting? How about if Director Mish accepts our invitation for a conversation? And you say, hey, what would it look like to have one more story and 15 fewer units? And let us actually have some input into that. I also want to say that I spoke to fire department leadership and they had significant concerns about this. And what I was told was that they actually don't have any say in it. So when, when O'Connell or whoever supposedly comes forward or the city does, they're, they, they can just say that they have concerns, but they don't actually have a way to formally respond. And they have a lot of concerns about the impassability of this. And I'm going to say that again, that this is going to be on you when we have an emergency. And the last thing is that I really appreciate what, what Councilor Rothenberg said. It was disgusting, that grovelling around Massasoit Street where, where our planning director lives, the concern about those three trees, the hour and a quarter about worrying about, you know, people like, oh, maybe they can see the playground. And you're telling me like such BS that we're gonna be looking at this monstrosity dwarfing our houses and there hasn't been one minute of concern about what it means for us.
Thank you, Deborah. Judy. You can unmute. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I can. Okay. Um, I wanted to, you guys had a question about, I think, my comment about waiving the requirement. So what I'm trying to say is where does it specifically say that findings for the site plan approval and findings for special permits do not apply to central business side? In other words, where does it say that you can meet one? You can try to meet one section of the code, which is central business side, but you don't need to meet the other code sections, which is the findings for site plan approval and special permit. Those findings are important because they address adjacent, they address the harmonious relationship to adjacent parcels and they address impacts on adjacent and parcels in the neighborhood. So those are my questions, other than, you know, where does it legally say that? Other than, I know the planning director said it was the intention of the Form Based Code. And I know in the staff report, she wrote that it was baked in the Form Based Code. But where does it legally say you don't have to do findings?
Thank you. I'm looking at the clock and it is 10:30. The planning board at its last meeting discussed that, um, we would like to have a hard stop at 11:00 when needed. So I just want to remind my fellow board members and members of the public about that. So, um, we'll continue going, but I think we'd all like to wrap up in the next, one way or the other, be ready to wrap up for tonight anyway, in the next 27 minutes. I do see one more hand online, Colin.
Hi. Did it on mute? It wasn't allowing me.
We can hear you.
Okay. So, um, I'm surprised to hear comments like George, that I guess you thought it was comical that is, um, these, uh, the step back will allow for a patio and people to have their cocktail hour out there. Raises a very interesting point. So while it is a slight concession and not having 44 windows 18 feet away or 20 feet away, whatever it is, now there'll be about 30 windows, you know, 28 feet away. And the rest of them will be stepped back a little, but now people have access to perhaps throw their cocktails when they're done right into my skylights. So, um, maybe this whole thing is funny to you and it feels like the whole board is just ready to rubber stamp this and you have completely ignored our concerns. And, um, you know, that'll be on you. That'll be on you. Every action has a reaction and repercussions. The comment about taller will not, will not be agreeable. Well, I actually have an idea that I think should be presented, but we're not gonna have enough time. But I'll give you a little sneak preview and I won't charge O'Connell Development very much for this design. So here it is. And can you see this okay?
No, we can't.
Okay, let me see if this will do it better. I'm gonna turn another light on. So here's a plan that will potentially it's step back. Can you see how the building is stepped back as it goes up Phillips Place? There's my house, George, that they can throw the bottles on because right from this, you know, the balconies. So it's stepped back and here there is no garage. So the overall height would be less. And then as you go down toward Holly Street, it actually goes up to six stories. They're allowed to go up that high. You've made that point to us before. And there should be an access road. Now, I know this is difficult to see, so I would ask you to continue. There'd be an access road right along here, which is next to Holly Street. So this building would have to be stepped back a little bit and that would allow for proper access for moving trucks and delivery trucks without stopping traffic on Phillips Place, which is already a problem. So I think this would be a responsible thing to continue this. And let's look at a project that is stepped back like this. Part of the, uh, criteria in the Northampton Plan is to engage with the community and have a system for mediation. So that's what we would like to have, is a chance to have some meaningful input and not have this rubber stamped. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Their motion, is there a discussion?
Motion first.
Sure.
All right, I'll move that we, uh, close public, public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll circle that motion.
George seconds. All those in favor? Okay. Comments, discussion? A motion?
You wanna discuss conditions? Reiterate any conditions?
I heard a few possibilities. And perhaps Carolyn can give some context on, um, whether these need to be explicit conditions, um, and how to formulate them. But George raised the possibility of swapping one of the added, um, parking spots to increase, bike parking or, um, condition access to additional, um, bike parking at the amenities building across the street. So that was one. Two, related to Chris, your question about the, um, building frontage occupancy calculations. And I think that's just updating the plans. And then I wasn't sure whether we want to condition an updated photometric plan related to the lighting on the balconies, um, just to ensure that that meets all necessary requirements.
You could, typically you do a post-construction as built. I mean, one of the things that you could do, the problem with, you know, when you have, um, different heights of different buildings, obviously you know this is depending on where you're standing, you might, um, experience glare because a light might be in a place that's higher up. So maybe the solution is that there's a parapet, that the lighting has to be on the parapet as opposed to at the entrance. I don't know if that meets building code or something, um, but yeah.
Okay. Carolyn, you, um, gave us some notes in the staff memo about, uh, waivers related to the sidewalk, the waiver of the 20-foot buffer. I believe we've addressed the sidewalk. We do need to formally include those as conditions.
Um, just acknowledgement that you're waiving them. And then also, George, um, you know, raise the pedestrian entrances on this place and also the glazing, ground floor glazing.
Okay. 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 I'm looking at some other notes here. Subening final plans with conditions at least 15 days prior to requesting a building permit. Utility connections and materials must comply with city standards. Tree protection for the tree in the southeast corner shall be installed and verified. Structural soils, which I believe the applicant has already addressed for the trees on Holly and two of the trees on Phillips.
I'm not sure if the details were in the plans, though.
Okay.
It was on the revised plans.
Okay.
Also.
Right, so detail on the plans on those. Cement concrete sidewalk shall be continuous across the driveway. Is that shown in the plans? Okay, great. And then as-built lighting prior to a CO. Are the conditions that are in the memo and have been discussed so far, are there other conditions?
Can you repeat, you, uh, at the top of the list, you had the noted, um, the one George raised, which is bike storage in the amenity building across the street. And then there was another one, I think.
That had to do with the updating the calculations and the plans related to the building frontage occupancy. Took notes. Is there a motion? Or other discussion? Perhaps let me invite discussion first. Is there other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion?
I will move, uh, that we approve the site plan and special permit for the new multi-story at Phillips Place and Holly Street per the conditions and waivers that we just reviewed.
Is there a second?
A second.
George, you have a discussion point?
Just a little bit.
Sure, go ahead. Your mic, your, your mic. Thank you.
This has been a hard meeting to sit through. You know, I feel personally kind of affronted and I'm not the only one here on the board or the staff. That was not slandered, but you know, assaulted by, uh, on the passing of the neighborhood. But again, I, I do represent the whole city. Massasoit Street, um, Bridge Road, Bridge Street, Leeds, Bay State. I've been on the board for a while. There's, um, each neighborhood is very specific to their concerns and their wants. This is unfortunately, I know it's very special to folks on Phillips. And, uh, we have two people on the board here who live in Ward Three. It's, uh, it's, it's a very, very difficult decision, but for me, the overmounting concern is that we need to provide more housing in the city. And I, I think this is a good plan moving forward. There's gonna be some constraints on the city streets. And I believe, uh, the neighbors will work through it. And years from now, those apartments will be, uh, God said, for many, many people moving into the city and staying in the city. So it's, it's hard as a planning board member to sit through this, but I, I appreciate that, uh, we do sit through it and we can see some of these plans come to fruition. Thanks. That's my discussion.
Thank you, George. Uh, I want to echo that, echo my thanks to everybody on the board and, um, my thanks to the public as well. I'm sure this is really hard for you too. I know it is. It's, it's certainly hard for us. I do just want to address one piece of the comment that effectively we're rubber stamping this. I can assure you that is not the case. I can assure you, every single person in this body has spent a lot of time thinking and about this project, paying attention, um, considering hard everything that you've said and the competing priorities and challenges that exist in our city. So, um, I promise you that's happening and I thank my board members for that work. Some days it's hard and Carolyn and the planning staff as well. So we had a motion and a second. Chris.
Actually, I'll make a comment too before we, is discussion still open?
Yes, it is.
I will echo what other board members have said, that this is not an easy decision, that this is not something I take lightly, that I have walked your neighborhood and I've looked around and I've imagined what this is gonna do to your neighborhood. And I'm, I'm torn about it, but in the end, I believe that I need to serve the interests of the entire city and not just your neighborhood and that this project is in the interest of the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rach. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. So I'm gonna put it to a vote, all those in favor. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Good luck with your project. Uh, we do have a couple of other items, business items on our agenda tonight. So I'm gonna ask folks to be quiet as you're moving out of the space so we can get through those quickly in the next 13 minutes. Thank you. Thank you. I believe that we had three sets of minutes.
Sure. It's all different pieces of loose that are already part of the public record.
From April 24th, March 13th, and May 8th. I trust we all had time to look through those. Any comments or edits or a motion for approval?
I'll move to the minutes of March 13th, April 24th, and May 8th.
Thank you, George. Three. We got three. Yep. Yep. And we had... All right. So we had a motion from George and a second from Stacy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Do we have A and Rs?
Don't have any and Rs.
Okay. We have scheduling. Okay.
So typically, you meet just once per month in July, wait, July and August. So I don't know if everybody has their schedules for that, so we need to do that to figure out what's best, if it's either the second, you know, which meeting, the second and fourth for each of those two months. And then I'd like to get some openings about the... Since we're all here, about the joint public hearing with Legislative Matters. You know, you already... You issued the permit for the Y, right? That's not a continuation. So you have two hearings on the 12th already. The next available potential meeting, and it might need to be a special meeting, but I don't know if anybody's available in June. June 26th, we don't have anything scheduled. That would be your next meeting. But I don't know Legislative Matters typically meets the second Monday, I think, of the month. So I think if it's any time in June, it's gonna be a special meeting for them anyway. So it's either they come to the Thursday meeting, which would be, I guess, the 26th, or... I mean, you could do... You already have two hearings on the 12th, so I don't know if you want to do a zoning amendment joint public hearing on the 12th. So the 26th...
Do we have any on the 26th?
No. Not yet. So I... And I don't, I have to say, don't know from... About the Legislative Matters schedule. So I think, you know, I could pitch to them the 26th and see, and because I don't know if they're meeting otherwise on the 9th, but they just will have other business. If they're not, maybe that's easier for them to come to the 26th. So I can certainly ask about that, if that works. Okay. And if not, then I'll just send an email, and maybe there's just a random day in June that you've scheduled.
And in terms of...
Yeah.
In terms of July and August, could you send an email, too? And ask...
Sure.
I don't have a calendar here.
Okay. Okay. That's fine.
Then we'll just...
Okay. We'd still be looking at Thursday.
Yes. Right. So for... Right. So it would either be for... And I'll send the email. It'll either be July 10th or 24th, August 14th or 28th.
What's my friend Ms. Fowler up to?
Huh?
Doing anything special?
Lady duck, man.
Yeah? Did you give a... Oh, okay. So you didn't give a death... Can't believe people aren't dying to...
Yeah.
You see, it's so much fun.
No, they're kneel, being pushed. Yeah. Yeah.
Congratulations.
I'll tell you when I'm available. I don't think it's gonna...
All right. So you're gonna send out an email about the summer, and you're gonna talk to Legislative Matters, and I guess follow up with this by email as well about the joint hearing. Okay. Yep. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will motion to adjourn.
10:51.
I gift you nine minutes back of your evening.
Wow. Time under budget.
Is there a second?
Oh, yeah. A second? All those in favor of adjournment?
The meeting is adjourned.
Now I can start my work.